The Spectrum meeting of February 2nd. It is 6:02. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you all stand, please? Join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we're standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Spanish translation.
We have Sandra to heal with us tonight. Sandra.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. Good evening, members of the board. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sandra Trujillo. Soy la intérprete para la reunión de esta noche. Si alguien necesita de los servicios de interpretación puede venir a verme para darle unos audífonos. Voy a estar localizada en la parte trasera del salón. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired. Dr. Sarves, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
No, not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. C2, announcement of closed session action. B1 will be later on the agenda. B2 and B3, nothing to report out. C3, do we have public comments?
Yes, we have two members of the public who wish to speak. We will have Ken Locke, followed by Joan Esposito. You will have three minutes.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the city council today. Mentioned to them the whole concept of like merging market. And actually, as I mentioned to them, we're going to have a merging economy. This current economy is actually, it's hard to say it's not based on an educational standard. And what I'm bringing to the table is an educational standard for an interdisciplinary education. I have, again, my name is Kenneth Locke, L-O-C-H dot net. And on that page, I have a link to a school that I'm developing. It's called, I call it the Interdisciplinary School for the 21st Century. What I'm claiming to be is the last of the, I think I've mentioned this all to you before, but I'll mention it again, claiming to be the last of the avant-garde painters of the abstract art movement of the 20th century who witnessed an enlightenment. I understand painting from a transcendent perspective in relation to it being kind of an exercise like a Jackson Pollock. With that, we can understand the connection that now, we can understand the connection that painting has with music and dance. And I'm sorry to say that this current economy and education is based on false concepts. Competition, capitalism, not in an interdisciplinary education. When you have an interdisciplinary education, it integrates the community. And this is 21st century stuff here. This is what, based on the fact that what I was able to accomplish and bring to the table, it's now, I make, it's now available to everybody to embrace. And let's see, I did a video, I have a thing called Tennesence, which is the Renaissance of tennis. I became enlightened through, also through the athletic discipline of tennis. I explain it in relation to the mind-body integration, spirit-soul. I did a video today, it's on, it's on tennesence.com. It's called Roger Federer's Level of Interdisciplinary Intelligence. In there, I mentioned that he actually has zero interdisciplinary intelligence. The relationship he has with tennis, again, is based on competition and capitalism. If you watch that. And also, I'm going to be bringing the medical profession, reforming that into the mind-body integration, mind-body medicine. I have a video on there called Maria Sharapova's
Thirty seconds.
Physical and mental illness. Her physical, she hurt her arm, and I'm using her as example. It was just a byproduct of a delusional relationship based on a mind-body gap. That would be kind of important video for you to watch, really to understand what I'm talking about. I'll probably see you guys next week, and I'll probably go before the city also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Joan Esposito.
Good evening, Joan Esposito, from the Dyslexia Awareness and Resource Center. I'm here tonight to report on a memo that I'm, I was going through the memos to the board. I guess you had a closed session, on issue of retaliation. And this is a memo to the board by Tom Guado. And I think if you remember, the FICMAT, which is, you know, very large, I think Mr. Guado and some of the staff members need to read this, reported retaliation against teachers. And I guess it was, there was 72% of your teachers, at least through an interview by FICMAT, the special education teachers, reported that they were, they felt they were being, they would be retaliated against if they advocated for these children. I've asked the, I've asked the board and the district to start, give a new policy, and I think you got a, had a copy, you received a copy on December 15th, which I gave to all the board members, on a retaliation bill specific to special education, because the retaliation seems to be against teachers who are in the special education program. Mr. Guado, and this has not gone out, I don't know how many people here have it, I just gave it out to one member of the audience, he's saying that defining the weather, the policy, another policy prohibiting retaliation practices, this suggestion came forward from a community advocate. I assume he meant me, because I brought it up at least 10 times since the FICMAT report. The suggestion maybe to put in new policy came from me, but the retaliation issue came out of this report. And Mr. Guado's report to you is very misleading. It will be misleading to say anyone else in the community, but I believe you do know what's going on. He's saying that to single out special education for additional policies would not be advisable. Why, Mr. Guado? Why not? The teachers are on the front line, and they feel retaliated against, and they can't come to this district for complaints. And I seem to be the only one up here for the last eight months talking about this. All these things that Mr. Guado has presented to the board, and it's, I think, 20 something pages, that, nothing addresses what we're asking for and what the FICMAT report is asking for. Mr. Guado says that he doesn't think that there's retaliation.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. And he said he is going to do a survey, and for more focus groups of the teachers to find out. Number one, we have the survey. You paid $70,000 for a survey, independent of FICMAT. Mr. Guado is misleading these children. I'll tell you, you have to look at what Mr. Guado was doing, or anyone else in the administrative office. We had four suicides and nine attempted suicides since this FICMAT report came out. We're not talking about jobs, we're talking about children's lives here. And this school board needs to address those issues. And Mr. Guado needs to be investigated. On November 10th, I gave you a request to investigate what Mr. Guado was doing in some instances.
You've passed your time, Joan.
Okay. And I've not been responded to from November 10th. I think I deserve a response, an investigation. Thank you.
The document that you referred to originally, that is a board brief. You can, people can receive a copy of it on the board website. And it is a public, yeah, it's a public document. Yeah, it's a public document, so anybody who wants to look at it, it is under Board Briefs on the district's website.
Thank you.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
May I return for just a moment to the previous item? Introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions, because I remember a, an introduction that I wanted to make to the board.
Yes.
Okay. And that is Abby Vasquez, who is serving as the head teacher.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I was sitting in the very back.
You were hidden back.
Can you use the mic?
Abby Vasquez, who's serving as the head teacher for the Santa Barbara Community Academy in the absence of the principal there. As a head teacher, she does not have a classroom. She's available throughout the instructional day, school day, for administrative responsibilities. And we're very pleased to have her there. Robin Sowaski, I believe, should make a couple of comments about Abby's background, because in fact, she's filled in in a number of important roles like this for us in the past. And Abby, we're not going to let you talk just yet. We're going to brag on you just a bit.
No problem. Okay. Now, I may not have her complete resume, but, but what I do know, since I've been in the district, Abby was a highly successful teacher at Franklin School for several years, and I believe she's taught several grade levels. But since I've been working with her at the district office in her administrative roles, she's gotten her administrative credential. And she, as a teacher on special assignment, first pulled into the district office to work with all the teachers in the elementary, and it's kind of bridged into the secondary district on English language development. And so she was one of our first TOSES, teachers on special assignment, to work on that program and really got it going in our district. She's also a trainer for our new math series, so she does the five-day training, and she just gets rave reviews from our teachers, much more than some of the other trainers that we've had from, not from our district. So she has those two roles with curriculum and instruction, and then she works with teachers on many other pieces of that. But as an administrator, she filled in at Adams School for a while. She filled in for much longer at Franklin when she took over for the principal that was on leave for a while there. And she was the homeschool Santa Barbara principal last year. After Pat Morales left, Abby was in that position for the year. So this is, the academy is a smaller school than some of the schools she's worked with, and different than homeschool, of course. And the minute the teachers heard that she was coming, when it was announced, when Brian told them, big smiles went around the room. They all know and respect Abby very much. And we also met with parents, and they are very happy to have her. So now, I guess she gets to talk, right?
Thank you.
Is there anything more to say? Good evening. I'm very happy to be in my position over at the Santa Barbara Community Academy, as I told the teachers there. When Robin and Brian requested that I step in over there, it was a very easy decision, because I do know the teachers over there serve very well, and how passionate they are about their program. And have had the opportunity to work over there in my capacity as a teacher on special assignment, doing model lessons for ELD with the students. So I know the students as well, and was eager to help out in any way that I could. So I've been there for a week, a little over a week, and it's been wonderful. The families have been very embracing, as have been the teachers, so.
Thank you very much, and welcome, and good luck, and we're happy to have you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good. Thank you, Abby. And thank you, Mr. Herron, for allowing that.
Back to C3, public comments?
No.
Okay. D, the consent calendar. There's one item on it. Does anybody want to pull it?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Going to the action agenda. E1, approval to change the start time of regular board meetings scheduled for February 9th and February 23rd, from 7 o'clock to 6 p.m.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. E2, approval to submit after-school education and safety program universal grant for Santa Barbara Caesar Chavez Dual Language Immersion Charter School. This was brought back from last week. Mrs. Sowaski?
Certainly, I'll briefly describe, you can kind of read from the agenda item, that we, Debbie Badger, the coordinator for the program, checked with the State Department, and, you know, we, we've really caught ourselves on that, thinking that a charter school does work as its own local educational agency, and thought that possibly they, they would have to submit on their own. But the person at the Department of Ed said that, that this is really a different kind of situation, because it's a grant. In fact, Boys and Girls Club and other agencies in the city could have applied under our grant as well. So it was appropriate for Debbie to have that grant. It's a separate grant in itself. Each one of them were separate. As long as the CDS code was correct, which it was, we should be able to submit. So it was submitted on time, and we'll wait to see. If they have any questions, the gentleman that she spoke with said that they would call us and ask us about it.
Dr. Noel.
I just want to thank you for clarifying that. I move to approve the application.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. E3, approve of board action on student expulsion case numbers. There's five numbers. Do I have a motion on 09/10-20?
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
abstain, because I was not here for that one.
Okay. Motion passed four with one abstention. 09/10-21.
Move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? Passed unanimously. 09/10-22.
Move to approve the stipulated one school year expulsion agreement.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. 09/10-23.
Move to approve the stipulated one calendar year expulsion agreement.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. 09/10-24.
Move to approve the stipulated one calendar year expulsion agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Cordero. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, going to the conference agenda. Item F1, report on 2009-10 plan for board focus goals.
Good. A number of months ago, the board asked to have this item placed on the agenda and have a workshop study of this item. This is an opportunity for the board to go back over the board focus goals. These are the board focus goals for this year, and to see what we as, as a district are doing about them. Last
Dr. Sarves?
Yes, go ahead.
For the public in attendance, there is a document about this. If you did not receive it, I think it's at the back table. It's quite a lengthy document.
And I just have a quick question. Is, this is, is, there's no difference between this and what we received in our packet, is that correct?
No, it's only the color version.
Okay. Thank you.
And that means that the changes that you've marked, and that I've marked, and we still need to make some, some revisions to this, you won't have changed already. Yep.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I think what's important tonight is that we review this with, with a mind toward whether the document is, is actually articulating the current plan and the actions that are being taken to deliver this. At the time we discussed this, and I have to put this in the context of budget cuts and, and the state budget crisis, we were all intent on moving forward on these goals, retaining a number of the same goals that we had worked with in the past, identifying those that were most important, because we're in the, an environment where resources are dwindling, and it's very important to, to preserve our core programs and preserve the things that are most important to us, preserve our forward momentum. And we have made quite a bit of forward momentum on a number of the achievement goals in particular. But we didn't want to put any additional burden on resources on the district at this point. These are the goals for this year. We're halfway through this year. This should really reflect, as a public statement, the kinds of things that we are actually doing, and where we are, very honestly, in these goals. And we will look at these goals next fall in terms of our achievement. For example, you'll see on some of these that we still need to gather some data. On others of these, we're working on, on action plans that will still need to be put in place for next year. And there are a couple of items that flow out of this that are on tonight's agenda for later discussion. We wanted to pull these out separately so that there'd be no confusion with the public, that we'd have a discussion about some very specific topics about our GATE programs, honors programs, about students and their diversity plans, moving into, to higher-level courses, especially those underrepresented students. So we do have some related agenda items to this. But I'd like to draw your attention to this draft, as something that we have been working on to, to describe to the public. First of all, our mission, core beliefs and commitments. And then, on the following pages, those three goal areas. On page four, you see an overall description of the board focus goals, and you see the three focus goals. You see some of the subgoals. We went through, and I know that the board didn't initially number these, but we assigned numbers to some of the sub-objectives so that we could organize them, because two of them, under student achievement, the first two, that all schools will exceed annual state and federal academic performance targets. And 1.2, that every school will achieve an overall similar school rank of eight or higher, with each student subgroup also achieving a similar school rank of eight or higher, are really goals that we've taken on in a very similar way. And they flow from the activities that we've undertaken over the past couple of years, and, and the board can see a number of the, of the initiatives on the part of the district having to do with standards-aligned instruction, common assessments, common interventions. And you see some of the interventions, whether they are ABAID, systematic English language development instruction, READ 180, and some of the others that are listed. Our work on PLCs, including PLCs for our administrators, professional learning communities, and professional teams. And we'd like to continue this work. We will, in just two months' time, receive brand-new ranks, similar schools' ranks, from the state, based on our scores last spring. And we'd like to include those in this document at that point in time. And maybe I should stop at that point, and without going ahead in the other student achievement goal areas, or into the other two other goal areas, Goal 2 on student safety and school climate, and then Goal 3, communication, and invite the board's discussion of these.
And any comments or questions on Focus Goal 1, student achievement? Which is basically page 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Dr. Noel.
Comments on the focus goal?
Right. On this, on Focus Goal 1.
Yeah, yeah. 1.1?
Anything on Goal, anything on Goal 1.
Okay, okay. Brought this up at a recent meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Sarves, but the last time I read some numbers, if you use the state's growth targets, which is what existing score, 800, the target, minus the existing score times 5% annually. 5% of the gap.
So it might be just 1-point growth.
That's right. Or 1, if it's, if it's
Yes.
I did that, and, and it looked, and some of our schools, if they just, if they made it every year, it would take 30 years. Okay. And I came away, and in fact, I think we were attending a meeting one time where, where this whole issue came up, of that, the, it's, that the state growth targets embody very low expectations. And, and one of the critical dimensions of it is that they are the same for every subgroup. So whatever, whatever the relationship between subgroups is, it, the growth targets make it a constant. By definition, you can't close the gap that way. And, and so, so you can meet these targets, you can look terrific in terms of what the state expects, and you can make, and make no progress whatsoever on closing achievement gaps between any of the subgroups. I find that, you know, anomalous, maybe politically expedient in Sacramento, but not helpful in setting targets for us. And I, and I wonder if, if we are at a point where maybe we can consider having district growth targets, that are, that we'd have to think through and, and kind of fine-tune, find, find an appropriate metric, but where, where we would be pushing the envelope.
Well, good. Let me respond to that. First of all, our experience with API growth has been different than that. It has not been a matter of schools just inching ahead, inching ahead, inching ahead. We have had schools with phenomenal gains. We have had, for instance, La Cumbre Junior High, that started at 640, and within four years has moved over 800. So we have seen big jumps, big jumps, big jumps. The second point, though, is that these are really the goals that we're operating under this year. And if the board would like to shift that in some way, you're welcome to do that, but don't do it just yet. Let's do it for next year, as we have this discussion later this spring, actually, about our goals for the next year, and see about some other way of looking at it so that we get more of that growth. Although, while the, the, meeting the API growth targets is one indicator, and, and we know that that's really the state accountability program, has served us well in some ways, because everyone's really striving to get their API up. Again, I go back to the original point, that in most cases, they have made big gains, or have made big gains one year, they may fall back. You know, it might be better to average, average the gain, for instance, over a number of years, over a two, three-year period, to see
But see, the state, but that's the school-wide.
Yes.
The state, the state targets are all calculated or expressed in terms of schoolwides, and they don't say anything about subgroups, and say, and give us a, a, a metric that we can aim for in changing, in closing the differences between subgroups. And that subgroup, and we, we focus on, on the socio-economically disadvantaged subgroup compared to the non-disadvantaged subgroup. And that number is hard to get, incidentally, because of the way the state reports its data. We focus on the Latino subgroup versus the, the white subgroup. We don't, we, we don't put a lot of attention on the special education, the Students with Disabilities group, and set targets there. And that's been a, I think the state's been all over the place on, on that.
And they really have.
Yeah.
And that's our group that's, that's grown the most.
Yeah. So, so anyway, it's just, and I agree, and, you know, but this seemed like a good time to raise the, to raise the question.
Before we go any further, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Let's take that in consideration as we go through the document.
Okay, so we want to have the public comment now?
Right.
Okay. Marcia Eichelberger?
Good evening, everyone. Marcia Eichelberger. I'm here this evening as a, speaking as a parent of two children who receive special education services from the district. And I understand that the board is reviewing and refining its current goals this evening, and is not considering new goals. However, in the future, when you are contemplating these new goals, a focus for the district, which it sounds like you're doing in the spring, I would propose that you consider developing one or more focus goals specific to the needs of students who receive special education services. At that time, I believe that members of the SEAC and community stakeholders would be pleased to partner with and assist the board and the administration, so that attention is paid to appropriate needs, and the resulting focus goals support the ongoing work of the SEAC, the Special Education Department, and the larger learning community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Eichelberger.
Other comment?
I should make another comment in the context of, of the API and the state goals, and that's a comment about the AYP and our federal goals, because we're looking this next year at some reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. And we're guessing that there's going to be a growth model that'll be put in place, whether it comes to us through Race to the Top, or through No Child Left Behind. But that, again, is a goal that we'll be looking at in the future, and we're operating currently under these AYP targets. And, and we'll probably have to operate under those for another year again.
Interesting piece in the New York Times, yesterday, or yesterday, was it?
Yesterday.
On that, on the possible changes.
Dr. Sarves has put that in the board brief for next week, or whenever the next board brief comes out. Mrs. Parker?
Well, on anything in Section 1, or Focus Goal 1, I was really pleased going through to see these action plan items, because I was feeling beforehand when we, we, we had through to see these action plan items because I was feeling beforehand when we, we, we had a review before 0910 started in the summer of where we were with the board focus goals. And there wasn't yet a full action plan in place. And so it's nice to see that there have been things happening this past fall and see it defined in this way, and also steps taking 0910 all the way through to the future and to the next fall. Did you want to comment on that?
Yes, I did want to comment on, on page eight, which is the action plan for Goals 1.1 and 1.2. The bottom four, you'll see repeated over on the 1.3, 1.4. They were actually supposed to be on the other two and not on this first one. They're somewhat related, but they're not really targeted at that one. So we purposely put Avid on both, but those last four will not remain on this 1.1, 1.2. They're more focused on the other. It was just, you know, getting everything together at the end.
Okay, yeah, I did notice that there was repetition there on that.
Right.
With commit to having all students reading at grade level within four years of entering the district, I mean, I, I would argue that having READ 180, which is listed as part of the instructional framework, that is the fallback for that and, and the action plan, and one that certainly the district has spent a lot of money on. In the 1.3 and 1.4 section, we did these board, the 0910 focus goals originally really, really early. I can't even remember if the new board members were in place.
We weren't.
We were not. So it was last fall.
You did November of '08.
It was last fall that we were, and the reason that we did it so far in advance was because we really wanted to be able to affect the budget for the following year if we needed to. And so I'm feeling like, and not, not only are we not ready to go forward with 10-11, but the budget's coming earlier, and so it's, it's unfortunate this time. One of the things that I was really glad to see with this, though, is this plan for October, Universal PSAT Administration for All Students. And with that, I think that one of the things we need to know is the cost. We'll be doing budget cuts in, very shortly, in February. But sometimes it's not just about cutting the budget, it's about reallocating for what's important or what's more important. And so I don't know if there's a preliminary cost estimate for this Universal PSAT Administration.
Dr. White, do you have any, I know we talked about this, and I don't remember if we actually put a, I know there's a lot of coordination that's involved. I don't know if we specified a cost. Looks like she may be able to get something.
It's $12 per student. And so that cost, if we're doing the Universal PSAT for the 10th grade, then we could look at the number of 10th graders, and it's about 500 students a class. So Avid would also do the PSAT in ninth grade as well, or Avid students do it in ninth and 10th.
Okay. So that, that will be put into play. And I guess I'm also wondering with the develop multiple pathways for high school students and enhance career tech education pathways, that's something that we're always talking about. Is there an action plan for that?
I believe that is the CTE plan that, Cynthia can talk about this again. There is, there is a plan, yes.
We do have a... Sorry. We do have a CTE plan that addresses our pathways, but this, this item is to explore even going further with our pathways and looking at, one of the things that you'll be looking at tonight is the diversity plan for the academies. And I think one of the values of the boards is that having students in academies. And so if you're looking at that as a value, then we put this on the action plan as exploring, is there a way for us to have all of our students in some sort of pathway or academy, if you will?
Well, one of the reasons I really liked seeing that was seeing the latest articles about the NCLB reauthorization and their idea that it's going to, now I can only remember the acronym already, CCR, College and Career Ready, that that's going to be the direction that they head up into instead of making adequate yearly progress. And I really think that's a positive way to go. I'm not going to hold my breath at this point because I know there's so much politics involved. But I like that we may be moving that way even, no matter what happens at the federal level.
Mrs. Deacon?
I'd like to start by thanking, thank you, Dr. Sarves, for putting this in some context because clearly, as we all read this, we realized there were things that are works in progress, or things even that are being pushed out into the 10-11 school year, but we're definitely making progress. One of the things that I grappled with was, is a focus goal something you just worked toward, or whether it's something that, that, a specific action that you have a measurable way to determine whether it was effective. And so I like some of the proposals here for very specific actions that are, that we're in the progress of working on, have already done, or will work forward to. I also read the article about AYP, and so I know that the playing field is shifting underneath us literally as, as we move forward on this, hopefully for the better. So I look forward to that. The, one thing that I focused in on was the instructional program framework. This is under the Focus Goal One Student Achievement, where we've identified common state and school board adopted standards, common assessments to monitor progress, common interventions. And while we're always mindful about the individual needs and cultures of each school side, I really like this idea of, of common assessments because I think in the end, it's much more effective, and it's much more efficient, and it's much more easy to measure and have those measurements make sense. So I'm really glad that we're moving in that direction and employing them at all the schools. Speaking of cost, oh, on the Universal PSAT, there are already a number of parents who pay for the PSA, for their students to take the PSAT. So I would expect we would continue to do that and, and make those tests free for families that are eligible.
We would probably establish an eligibility based on free and reduced lunch eligibility, just like you do for an AP exam or an SAT.
Right. And, and the last thing I'll leave behind in the student achievement is, and I know we're going to be talking about GATE and, and advanced placement, but because it's in here, do we know how many students are being tested for GATE at the elementary level?
I have that in my file on my computer. Harriet Wayley did give that to us this year because they're being tested right now as we speak. I mean, not right now, but...
I was just thinking, if we're going to set aside money for PSAT testing, and one of our goals is, is to increase diversity in, in GATE honors program, that we really want to make sure we're testing all the students?
Well...
Or as many as we can?
Yes. And another thing that we've put in place, this is the second year, is reaching out to our English learners. And so Davis does a query at the end with the test scores from our third graders, and we take the top 5% of those students, and we send out and we encourage them to be tested for GATE. That has been our strategy. This year, we only got 39% of the group that could have been, they were qualified, they're the top kids, only 39% did we get sign off from their parents. So we're doing two things. We're taking a pilot program to be, in fact, in February. All of the students who are identified, and they had the most kids at Harding School that actually qualified with, with high advanced scores in English Language Arts in third grade, we're going to test all of those students. So we did one of those opt-out kinds of things. So instead of having everyone sign, it says your child will be tested unless you say you don't want that. And so we're using that, and we can, we will continue to use that strategy next year for all the schools, hoping that we can then identify, I mean, that's just one group. That's a group of English learners who are showing that they are really, you know, advanced learners as far as, you know, learning quickly. I can tell that.
Can I just ask a point of clarification on that? Are you saying that all third graders at Harding had an opt-out, or just the ones that were identified?
Just the ones that were identified. Those top students in, from the last year's STAR exam, or STAR assessment. So we're making efforts in that regard with elementary. That's just one of the things we're doing.
Mrs. Goodell?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate having this report. This, I think, really, we, we haven't done this in the past to sort of go mid-year and look at where we are with our focus goals in a really systematic way. So I really want to say how much I appreciate that and how valuable I think it is as a board member to do this. One of the things that I kept kind of trying to, it, it's, you know, the teacher in me, I kept kind of wanting to give us a grade on each area as I'm looking at, okay, are we doing B-plus work? You know, are we just barely making C? So I was looking at some of these, and I'm thinking, I was trying to grade sort of where we are, judge where we are with them. Some of them, we seem to be making a lot of, well, let me take that back. In some cases, we seem to be taking a lot of actions. At this point, and I think it's just the nature of the way that we have to measure this, we don't know how effective those actions have been yet or are being yet. So I was wondering, in the, in any of these, I'm particularly looking, for example, on page five, where we're looking at the things that have been developed already, the pyramid of interventions, you know, AVID, the systematic English language development, READ 180, et cetera, et cetera. It would be nice to kind of have a, even if it's a subjective assessment of how we think those are doing. You know, perhaps even just like a little one-line annotation, you know, this has proven to be very promising, or this hasn't produced the initial results that we had hoped for, you know, or something like that, just kind of to get a sense of other things that we are doing, working. And then, oh, sorry.
I was, I was going to say with that, for instance, with AVID, we have, I believe our first class is graduating this year. That has gone through with the full AVID program. So we'll have some data to talk about that, or to, you know, to be able to look at that. READ 180, we are getting benchmark data, and so we, we're really seeing what that looks like with growth. The other things, of course, fall in. I'm just, I'm trying to see which things that we actually have very concrete kinds of data on. As we get into the diversity plans with the academies, I know you've got, like, there are numbers of students that are in there now, but I was, I was noting that last year in '07, '08, when we got a report, as far as our, it's minor little growth, but our Latino percentage was 21.9, and our white 71.9. Well, this year, at, with Latino, we're 23.5, and our white population 68.3. It went down a little bit, Latinos went up a little bit. That was, that's minor, but we do have that data to show. We haven't noted it here. This is just what is right now. So we could, we can adjust, I mean, the whole point of this is to set really concrete targets so we can show that the percentage is growing. In some cases, we don't have the baseline yet to even start that. The last one, 1.4, we don't have accurate baseline data to show, but we're working on that.
So that would be great, the areas where we do have the, the, you know, qualitative data.
Right.
And then the areas where we don't, maybe just a, you know, a...
Summary.
A summary, just a little note. And I don't necessarily mean anything lengthy. And then Ms. Parker touched on a number of the other areas that I was going to ask about, specifically on page 11, the multiple pathways. And I think Dr. White sort of explained that, and also the issue about the PSAT, the Universal PSAT. But back on page eight, and I, somebody mentioned this already, but I was just wondering, are the very first one, commit to having all students reading at grade level within four years of entering the district. To me there, I was wondering, because commit is kind of a wishy-washy verb, I think.
Oh, we thought it was pretty strong.
Well...
We had everyone hold up their hand.
It's, you know, it's, it's nice if, I mean, that we are committed to that, but exactly, how do we measure it? What does it, what does it actually mean in terms of practices? So I was wondering there, would we say that the way that we are addressing that is through these other items that we've already, that we saw back on page five?
The way we would monitor that?
Yes. How are we measuring?
We can just...
Well, first of all, I would say rather than just being committed to it, that we should have a verb that says we're going to, yes.
We're going to do it. Ensure, achieve. I know.
This will happen.
Right. What that would mean is that every third grade, well, if you started in kindergarten, every third grader would be reading at grade level, at proficient level, by the end of third grade.
But, but my question had more to do with our plan of action. So that's what I'm thinking. So what are we doing to show that we have committed to this? And so I was thinking, you know, some of them are the kinds of things that are listed back on page five, but others would be very different. And so some of these, I think, take a little bit more explanation than others. Some are very, very clear-cut. And I think that was all I had on number one. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I just had two questions on page seven. Something I've wondered about, how, how many years has the focus goal been to get eight or higher?
Well, it was only this year it had been seven or higher. And we slipped this last year because the rest of the state is moving up. The subgroups have not been shown before. We only had Latino and white, and these other subgroups are things that we calculate ourselves.
I mean, for, for schools that have one, two, or three, or four, I mean, is it realistic that they're going to make eight at any time in the, I mean, it seems to me that's a lofty goal, but usually goals are achievable or, you know, realistic. And it seems to me that might just be a, an unrealistic one for, at this moment in time. But then it goes on page nine, we have every school will significantly increase, and the word significantly.
Yes.
What's the definition of significantly? I mean, the previous one, eight is the number. What's the number? I mean, in one case, we say eight, that's specific, then we come to this one, it says significantly, but what is significantly?
Well, I can tell you right now, it's a lot higher than we have right here.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, how will we know we achieved significantly?
Yeah, we could define that. We, we did have some discussion about that at the time we adopted these goals, and we just needed a big increase. And I think we agreed upon the word, or the board agreed upon the word significantly, but it could in the future be further defined. In fact, along those lines, I would like to talk about the data, some of the data pages here.
Okay.
If you take a look at page number six, you know, we've been, we've been looking at API growth for a long time in our district, and we've seen tremendous API growth. We have also been looking at AYP targets, and we've seen extremely high growth in the percent of students who are proficient or higher, as would be measured by AYP. But since the targets move up, this doesn't look very good. I mean, this means that a school would have to hit, for instance, Adam School would have to hit in English Language Arts and Math, that new target for the school-wide, every subgroup, including students who are English learners at the school. And a lot of these schools miss in, well, a lot of these schools miss that target in too many areas, but the targets, hey, it's skyward, and, and this doesn't really reflect the, the major increase that we have seen district-wide in the percent of students who are proficient or higher in English Language Arts and Math. On page seven, where we do have these calculated similar school ranks, including for our socio-economically disadvantaged English learners and students with disabilities, there are a lot of schools that are far below the mark on this. And we expect to see big changes in two months' time, in March. But you're probably right. We won't see some of these that are down at a one and a two, moving up toward an eight. Nevertheless, we need to be, we need to see some change as we're working with the schools.
Is there an explanation why Cleveland does so well?
Exactly. And La Cumbre?
Well, I would look in the elementary, but La Cumbre, we've talked about La Cumbre many times.
Sure. In fact, Joanne Keynes is here, and if Mike Vale were here from Cleveland, he would start by saying it's the year-round calendar. And, well, if you've been to Cleveland, there are just a lot of things going on at Cleveland School that really pump instruction to the students. You know, when they participated in sort of the Texas model, the Brazosport model, they identified the specific standards that were critical. They work students toward those standards on a regular basis. There's a lot of systematic... standards on a regular basis, there's a lot of systematic instruction going on to get to that point.
They actually, I was gonna say before you started that, that both of those schools you mentioned use their, if you will, benchmark or informal assessments religiously. I mean, they look at that data all the time. Cleveland still uses this, uses that Brazosport model in that they do standards, the standards for all, or, I can't remember the name of it now, it's changed names. Do you know what it is, Dr. White?
Yes, it's called Standards Plus.
Oh, Standards Plus, that's right, it's a new version of that. So, they, they still do that consistently.
They constantly monitor.
You may want to interview Mike Vale there.
Yes.
We learned a lot from Joanne, and we probably can learn a lot from Mike. Other comments, but Dr. Noel. Oh, you want to finish, okay.
Yeah, let me just finish very briefly, and, and then I'll yield to you. On page nine, when we see the number of Latino students in gate programs, that really sets the stage for our discussion later tonight. On page 10, this, this is a failing on our part, you know, we have not moved these numbers. This has been a goal for a while, for about a two-year period, as I recall, and we have not seen changes in these numbers, and that also sets the stage for some of the diversity plans and some of the things that we'll be talking about later. And on 1.4, we need to talk about what that data actually looks like, but Dr. Noel, I think you had some comments that we may want to talk about.
Well, I want to, back on page seven, because this, the information in this table is very, very significant. If you, when you, first of all, it's very significant, as we've already commented, that Cleveland and La Cumbre get very high similar school scores. The issue, one way of looking at achievement gaps has seemed painful, painfully in here, in that we have schools that have similar school scores of 10 for the white subgroup, and only three or even less at Monroe and Peabody for the Latino subgroup. Now, what, what that's saying is, that's saying, that's talk about schools, it's not talk about demographics, because what you're saying is that within that subgroup, you've got, in the state of California, in this case, a very substantial number of schools that are, that are cutting the muster, and our schools are not. That's comparing us to other people's performance. So, so, while, while I agree with you, Mr. Herron, that when you're at a one, eight seems like it's unattainable, and maybe we should be looking for, have some goal that's defined in terms of rates of movement, but that is very significant, that the kids giving these numbers and giving these measures, the Latino kids at Monroe, for example, are greatly disadvantaged compared to where they are at, at most of the 100 similar schools to which they're being compared. And, and that's, that's very significant information, and I, I, well, I don't want to say what I'd do if I were principal, because I'm not sure what I'd do, but I would sure look at that with great alarm, and I would be beating a path over to Cleveland, or I'd be beating a path over to La Cumbre, trying to find out what's going on.
Well, I'm glad you commented on that, because that Latino column does highlight some areas that we have very specific concerns about.
My, my comment was, if I was the principal and I knew the goal was an eight, but yet I'm sitting at two, am I gonna do things to get to an eight, or am I gonna, I'd be better off having a goal of six, or, or five?
Or three.
Or three. Does the goal of eight turn people off? And they say, hey, we can't do that, and therefore, why try as hard? But if you had a goal that was relative to your school, of an incremental over the next two years, three years, to move, to move up.
A change vector of some kind.
That was my, that's my only thought.
Just let me, Mr. Cordero, just let me put a footnote to my comment. The other thing is that this is, as Dr. Sarus points out, new, and, and my experience is looking back at the API, it took like two to three years before people paid attention to that statistic, and, and I think that you have to kind of get it out there, and people start to realize, and then discussions like this point out that, oh, this is significant, we better pay attention to this.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, because I agree with Dr. Noel, that you look at the, at the, you compare the similar school ranking of the white subgroup with the Latino subgroup, and at every level, whether it's elementary, junior highs are the least, where we see it the least, but even there, we have similar, you know, similar school score rank of 10 for white and three for Latino, but at the high school level, we have, you know, nine for white, three for Latino, 10 for white, two for Latino, so we're talking, and 10 and four, so we're talking about where, yeah, I'm not sure of how else we can say it than that we are serving one group of students exceptionally well, and serving another group of students, who in many cases are our majority students, exceptionally poorly. And so, I think these numbers tell us something, but I would, I would like to see us focus on data that's specific to how our students are improving, because I think while the single, while the similar school rank shows us where we stand relative to the rest of the schools in the, in the state, the rest of the schools are constantly changing. So, it's really hard to say whether our students' performances have actually improved or not, because they're being measured against other students who may, so we can measure whether we improved relative to what other schools did, but I'd like us to be looking also at our students and whether they improved relative to what they did previously. And that's something-
Differential growth chart.
Exactly. And so, this is, that's an area where I think we have to really consider how we want to measure it, and whether the similar school ranking really is what we want the focus goal to be, or whether if we want to sort of nuance that a little bit differently, to get more, at more, you know, at data that might have more meaning for us.
Mrs. Parker?
Two points along those lines. One is that, you know, within our own district, we have one example, Cleveland at the elementary, and one, La Cumbre, at the junior high level, with 10s for the Latinos. So, we, we know it can be done for the similar schools ranking, and we have the examples right here for policies and practices and systemic changes, that I, I know that you're making every effort to see that spread across the district, and so, I, I want to point that out, because we do have those successes within our own district. My other question, I guess, is CALPads, the, the student longitudinal data, and being able to track a student's growth over time. By next year, will that be usable? Because it would be-
Mrs. White shakes her hands and says, yes.
I, I think that we will have some capabilities of doing that. I don't think the system will be perfect by next year, but I expect that we will be able to look at individual students' growth longitudinally, we'll look at, we can look at cohort data.
Because that is, I mean, obviously, that's where I think the federal and state mandates are headed anyway, but it would just be so great to see, did we affect change for this, for our students, in, you know, percentage-wise, over time, rather than looking at this? But for now, I think this is all that, that we can really do.
Can we go to focus goal number two on page 12?
Before we do, would you permit us to talk about 1.4 and student achievement? All high schools will increase the number of students and underrepresented students who are eligible for admission to University of California and California State University Schools. And then we have a number of things in parentheses.
It's actually about the wording of that goal and the language that's in there, because as we started working on the action plan for this, we realized that one of, it needs to be revised so that we can really effectively state a clear, attainable objective. What we wanted to do, and it's, it's a fairly minor change, but we wanted to read, "All high schools will increase the number of students and underrepresented students who are eligible for and gain," so adding and gain, "admission to University of California and California State University Schools," which, and then in the parentheses, "complete A through G requirements." We'd like to strike the PSAT, SAT slash ACT, because that is in our action plan to get there. We, I mean, we're gonna get all students doing that, we're not gonna trace their scores on that, that's something that's gonna support them to get there. So, that's something that we don't think we need to gather data on. And achieve, which we don't have in there, above a 3.5 grade point average in the A through G courses, and that's really where that eligibility is, and gaining admission. You, you complete the A through G requirements, those classes, with a 3.5 grade point average in those courses. Those are really the two things that we want to track, because, and, and of course, whether students are gaining admission to University and Cal State. See questions?
Mrs. Deacon?
Just a couple of quick questions. How many of our schools fall into the same 100 similar schools? Do we know?
Oh.
I was just wondering, are we, are we measuring ourselves against each other?
It's been some five years since I've looked at that, very few of them. When I look at those lists, it's, it's rather unusual to have heart, well, even one or two of our own schools showing up on the same list of 100 similar schools.
San Marcos quite often with, with Santa Barbara High.
Oh, very good.
I shouldn't say quite often, but-
Very good.
More than twice.
And Cleveland would always be, and with Cleveland, we'd always be looking at other year-round schools as well.
No, no, not at all, no.
Okay, so that's not one of the criteria.
In fact, these similar schools, the 100 similar schools are ranked by the school characteristics, and parent education is the number-one characteristic that goes into that formula. The others are the percent of students who speak English, the number of English learners, and then socioeconomics, the number of free and reduced lunches. Those are the three variables that account for almost all of the variance. Anything else, mobility, any of the other factors of the 14 that go into that school characteristics index are very minor compared to those three.
So, if, if we did think that being year-round had a role to play in that number of 10, we'd want to look at other year-round schools and see how they compare to their other similars, to other similar schools.
You gotta find them.
Right, I know.
Yeah, I believe-
You have to call them all to find them.
Right, I believe it's more about the extended learning, which is in all the research. Our year-round schools make use of that intervention time, I mean, that intercession time, and our kids are in school pretty much year-round.
And then, just the last thing I wanted to mention, as we look at dual enrollment as one of these areas that we'd like to increase student participation in, particularly Latino participation, the dual enrollment classes are not, are sometimes career tech kinds of classes, and so, that's something I think to keep in mind. I think it's a good thing, but, but we're looking at classes like automotive technology and not U.S. World History or something as well, so, just, just a thought.
Mrs. Cordero.
I just wanted to comment on Ms. Swasky's suggested revision, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't write it as you were saying it, so-
That's okay, I can get it written.
The, the part that said, and, I think it was, and gain admittance to, or-
And gain, right after eligible for and gain admission.
Admission to. One of the concerns I have with that, and obviously, it comes from my background, is that it, I think, presupposes that students who, that students entering a four-year institution are achieving at a higher rate than students who enter a community college. And so, there are many, many students who might be eligible for a four-year institution, and that's what I would want to see, because it means we've, we have provided them with the opportunity to become eligible. But there are many, many, many reasons why students might choose to attend a four-year, a two-year institution, even if they're eligible for a four-year institution, that are perfectly valid and don't reflect any, you know, any failings or, or, what, lacking in their educational preparation. And so, I'm, I'm concerned about adding that language.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and what we could do is not add that, add the, achieve the 3.5, because that's part of being eligible and actually, you know, getting admitted if you wanted to. We could track, though, the eligibility and track those kids who are actually being admitted, because that's where we're really lacking. We have a dismal number of students that actually attend, and for many good reasons, as you say.
Right. And I think what might be more, more meaningful, because the fact that we might have a small number of students, a smaller number of students going to a four-year institution, and I apologize if this sounds self-serving, but might speak to the fact that we have a high-quality community college in our community, that many students, even from outside the area, choose to attend. What I think might be interesting is if we, if we could, if we could track the students to see if they ultimately end up in a four, graduating from a four-year institution, because if they start out at a two-year institution but ultimately graduate from a four-year institution, that, everybody's good, I think.
Dr. Noel?
May I make a comment about that, Ms. Cordero?
Doctor-
We, we actually will be able to track exactly what you're talking about through our CALPASS, and we're being trained on February 23rd how to actually do that tracking process. So, if you wanted to make that a goal, that is something that we will have access to data for all of the California public institutions, so that would not show us data for the private colleges, four-year colleges, but we can track that, and that is starting this spring.
Good, thank you. Dr. Noel?
Yeah, I, I want to endorse what Mrs. Cordero says about and, and a gain admission, and with the same theme, but maybe a more nuanced, a little, another twist. We, the big, one of the biggest ones is the fact we don't have a four-year institution within commuting distance, so you look at, you're looking at eight to $10,000 room and board to go to CSU Northridge, Channel Islands, maybe, that's a pretty tough commute. So, so I think that's, it's a, it's a big factor, and it skews all the data about, the meaning of the data about direct admission to four-year schools. I'm looking here at this, the A to G requirements. I understand the A to G requirements, but my understanding about the 3.5 is a little different, and, and maybe things have changed since I last looked at it, and you can help me out here. Last time I looked at UC eligibility, there was, it was a two-variable model, and, and you went in one access with your SAT scores. Now, if they're not, we, has UC abandoned SAT? I didn't think so.
No, no, they haven't.
So, you go in one access, one, one access with a SAT score, and you go in the other one with a GPA, and you find a, a number at the intersection of those points, and there's a range of numbers that, that you could, you can get eligible by having very high SAT scores and a lower GPA, or you can have a, a lower GPA, or I said that, you can have, you know, a high GPA and lower SAT scores. So, this sounds, this doesn't seem to capture that, but more importantly, okay, if you, you can have a rational strategy that kind of combines two, two of the things we're talking about. Your strategy can be, I'm gonna go to City College and save the bucks for two years, but also, I can transfer out of City College with a 2.4 or 2.5 and get into UCSB, which, and, and what's wrong with that? And, and we're not recognizing that, and, and I think that's a very reasonable thing, particularly because we know increasingly, kids have to work their way no matter where they're going. And staying at home, being able to work, take, maybe you don't take just two years at City College, maybe you take three years getting ready for that move as a junior transfer. I make a special case for junior transfers, because I was one, and I would never have gotten into the UC system without it.
Can you take this information and revise that little box?
Well, I can. I know that you, originally, you all, when we did the focus goals, had the 3.5. The reason we have that on there, you're absolutely right, Dr. Noel, about the different, you know, the, the GPA and your SAT scores and all the other things that go in there. We just know that students who actually do get, who are, they're eligible and they get in, they have at least a 3.5, most of them are 4.0 or higher. So, I think that's what was in our original thinking for that. All we really added was in the A through G courses, because those are the ones that really count.
Well, are you looking at, you're looking at Berkeley and UCLA and San Diego, or are you looking at- Well, are you looking at, you're looking at Berkeley and UCLA and San Diego, or are you looking at Merced? Are you looking at Riverside and, and Santa Cruz?
They're, they're all way up, they're way up there.
They're way up there.
Yeah, very difficult.
Well, the initial problem was finding reliable data. So as we went back through our system to find reliable data and on who actually satisfied the A through G requirements and who was getting this grade point average, we were having difficulties with that. We're having to go back and recreate the baseline on this, and we're having direct transcript searches that are responsible for that, so our counselors are having to do the legwork on this. And then we'll have to have them do it for the students who are graduating this year as well.
To get through this year, can we just add the word and achieve above 3.5? To, to get through this year and then we can change it for
We want to keep the complete A through G, don't we?
Right, yeah, yeah, complete A through G requirements and achieve above 3.5 grade point.
In the A through G courses.
Mr. Herron, see, that, that's the same issue about setting goals that are, that are not proximal. And, and, and it says nothing about the, the pathway that goes through community college, and, and the goal there is, is quite different.
Well, and, and I also had a question about for CSUs. I don't know what the, if, if the G, the 3.5 is
I don't think so.
Necessary for CSUs.
No, it's 3.0 without taking in your SATs into account, it goes down to all the way to 2.0.
The, the question, or the concern that I have is, I feel like we have two goals here, and we've tried to, we've meshed them into one. One goal is to make sure that we are providing students with an educational experience that makes them eligible to go on to higher ed, to go on to the, a four-year institution if they so choose. And that's one goal. So we're saying, we want to make sure they have met all those requirements, that more and more students are achieving at that level, so they are going to be eligible if they want to do that. The other goal is measuring how many students actually do it. And to continue to increase the number of students who actually do go on to higher ed. And that's where I think the issue becomes, what are we going to count as going on to higher ed? And how are we going to measure that? And how are we going to, what are we going to consider success there in terms of, as achieving our goal? And so I, I feel like we've conflated the two a little bit. And I think we shouldn't, because it confuses.
Although we're far enough along in this, that, you know, we were working with the Board's language at the time about, you know, UC, CSU, A through G, 3.5. Would you please let us grapple with this, and we'll bring it back to you?
Mrs. Deacon?
Can I just add one statistic, and I'm sure Mrs. Cordero knows this, but students who graduate from community colleges who, who then transfer to four-year schools have higher GPAs when they leave their four-year school than those who entered as first-year four-year students. So they're, you know, that really shows what a great job the community colleges are doing, and the fact that those students are high-caliber achievers.
Dr. Noel?
I, I would like to put a, to make an appeal that somehow, I mean, this, to me, this sounds very elitist. Okay, and that, that, if it's, if, if elitism is the only path, so be it, but it's not. And I can picture, now, I'm not sure I want a school to take this as a goal, but, but for a lot, an awful lot of kids, it's a very respectable goal to say, we're going to, our responsibility is to get you into college. Your route may be, and the first thing we're going to do is make sure that you can get into City College. Okay, and, and, and not just everybody can get in, but that you can be a, a college-bound or four-year college-bound student at City College. We're also going to help you get some skills so you can get a job to pay to go through school. And I know that's hard to wrap into these kind of goals, but I, I didn't have them, and I worked graveyard shift in gas stations to get through community college. There ought to be a better way, and, and, and we have career technical programs. Getting, getting to college today is a lot more than just coming out the high end with a GPA of 3.5 and, and scoring big to get into UC, UCLA. You know, it's, for, for an awful lot of kids, this, that is just not, that's not even close to reality.
Let, let me ask the Board's direction on this then, because we were grappling with this idea of university preparedness, because that was the language in this objective. Would you like us to stay with that, or would you like us to move to something different? Yes.
Mrs. Deacon?
Kate, Kate's got it.
Well, it's the, it's the, it's what they're saying out of the US Department of Education, college and career ready.
College and career ready.
But I would suggest that we're, we have our 0910 goals here. We're about to address, I hope, within the next eight weeks, 10, 11 goals. And it seems like that would be the time where we'd make the big change in the way this looks.
I would agree. How about if we stick with university preparedness here, since that's what we've been working on, and that's the data set that we're putting together? College and university?
Because you're at, at, you're at CSU and
May I make a comment about that?
Dr. White?
Sorry, the Race to the Top is suggesting that one of the parameters that they may be looking at for the reauthorization of No Char Left Behind, now called the Elementary-Secondary Education Act, is that students be placed in college-level courses within one year of graduation. So that's the way that the federal government, at this point, is proposing to look at college and career readiness. And I think part of that is because the colleges want to get out of the remediation business, so that may be something that you'd like us to consider.
Thank you. Can we go on to Focus Goal Two? Student safety and school climate. How are we coming with the similar survey for youth with parents? In the middle of the page.
Mr. Gonzalez, would you please comment on that?
We are still in the process of developing the parent survey as well as the staff survey. I, I shared with you that there is an instrument that was developed for staff out of WestEd through, with a contract from CDE, and we're proposing to use that. We do have a number of student surveys, however, they really only include samples from the fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade. And if I interpret the Board's will, we want to be very much more comprehensive than that. So we're right now taking a look at what would be appropriate instruments to use at all grade levels in both those areas, student safety and school climate. Very recently, we received a report that's not been shared yet with the Board nor with administration. The California Healthy Kids Survey, you may recall that every other year we do a comprehensive one, and then in the interim year, we do a grade seven, nine, and 11. We just received the results of the seven, nine, and 11, and we'll be sharing that with the Board in a Board Brief, the next Board Brief. And it's very telling, and we believe we need a lot of work to determine how reliable and valid those results are. And if they are valid and reliable, it shares, or it tells us that we've got a lot of work to do in the area of student safety.
Mrs. Cordero?
This is one of the focus goals that I was really, I really grappled with the language when we were developing it. And one of the things that I find missing here, that I would like to see, well, there are several things, but, for example, I'd like to see a list of what we are actually doing, which we have, for example, on page 13 for, for Focus Goal Three, the actions. I'd kind of like to see the actions listed out here. Embedded in the text, we do see, we do see some of the actions, but
We can break that out.
I would, I would love to see it sort of broken out. One of my concerns is that the actions, to me, seem to focus specifically on how we're teaching students to better interact with each other. One of the issues that we haven't addressed, which I have to say I haven't really ever seen addressed, is, well, no, that's not true, I take that back. But that I would like to see addressed here is what we are doing with faculty and administration and staff to help create a more welcoming environment for our students on the part of the district staff. And create a more welcoming and hospitable environment to the staff as well. So that when we have, because one of the issues is that we've seen repeated, or that I've raised repeatedly, and other people have too, is our lack of diversity among many of our staff groups. And so I think it's need, this needs to be, I, I feel like this needs to be interpreted a little bit more broadly, because school climate includes everybody, and that whole climate that we create affects how the students achieve. So I'd like to see this broaden to include more than just, you know, how students are going to interact with each other.
Well, and engagement of students in, in the life of the school. In fact, we know one of the strong indicators of success is the degree to which the student actually participates in the life of the school. It might be in sports, might be in some club activity, might be in any number of things, but that, that level of engagement is, is really key.
Mrs. Parker?
I completely agree with the points that Mrs. Cordero has raised, so I, I hope that that's a direction that we'll move in. On this section, one of the actions that is listed on our Board Focus Goals for 0910 that we were supposed to take to support Focus Goal Number Two was implement a K-12 gang prevention and intervention program. And I know that we're hearing about pieces of it, but I think it would be nice, at this point in the game, for us to get a cohesive update on how it's all fitting together. Obviously not tonight, but sometime soon.
Yeah, the, the last paragraph on that, page 12, is interesting, and it talks a little bit about that. Dr. Noel?
Didn't we not in our discussion just the other night, talk about, not using the word gang intervention, but talking about violence prevention?
Yes, although we did have the language from the Board earlier
No, I understand that.
Gang prevention and intervention.
But there's a, I mean, it's, it's not just words, there's, there's some significant meaning differences there that I think we should be taking account of.
Okay.
I note, I note here that there's a lot of survey research, and I, I would suggest that we consider talking to the Social Science Survey Center at UCSB in regard to getting some real professional expertise in, in, they're talking about some technical language about validating and talking about the validity and reliability of questionnaires and
That'd be good for all the surveys we do, if they would help us out on that. Mrs. Deacon?
Directing us back to this, this last paragraph on 12, too, where parent education is identified. We recently got a Board Brief listing the number of schools that participate in parent education, and it was unfortunately pretty slim. And, I mean, looking at towards next year's focus goals, I'd definitely like to move that up front and center. But I would hope there's some things we could do before the end of this year to emphasize with sights the importance of that parent education piece.
Almost every school site plan spelled that out very clearly, so I hope there's more going on that was in that report.
I believe that was, it was a really formalized kind of education programs, the way it was addressed, or the request was made. And so a lot of schools sent back information, we do this, we do this, little piecemeal things, but they weren't a part of the program the way Dr. Sarvis had asked. So that may be why the response was, you know, it looked slim to me, too. I know more is going on, but it's not as formalized as it probably should be.
Anything further on Goal Two? How about Goal Three, communication?
Well, we have a, that's a major issue in the FICMAT report, and there's a subcommittee of stakeholders focusing on communication with regard to special ed issues. I mean, some of that might inform this, and this
Well, and some of those are drawn into this, as you can see, let's see. I don't think I'll be able to find it quickly.
The very last one at the bottom of the page.
Well, I'd say more about the, the kinds of things they are recommending could, could inform this. And similarly, I'm not sure that, that, I know, I was on the group, that that group didn't read this. So there's an interaction there.
I mean, I'll just say that I, I certainly like a lot of the actions that are in process and look forward to seeing some results on some of these things soon.
Dr. Noel?
Go ahead, Mrs. Cordero, I think your hand was up before mine.
Mrs. Cordero?
I also want to say that I like a number of these things. I think it's really good that we are focusing on making sure that we are communicating better with the public, with parents, with staff, et cetera. And so I, I really appreciate a number of these that have been listed here. I, I, I'm probably going to begin to sound like a broken record on this item, but I would like to see as in our, in our outreach to the Spanish-speaking community, move beyond translation. That seems to be our whole focus in these items, is getting more headsets for translation, translating all the documents. And believe me, that's important, because when I first got on the Board, we weren't even doing a lot of that. But I would like to see us move beyond translation to holding Spanish-language meetings, holding bilingual meetings, and I know I've, that's the part that I keep repeating. I think maybe we need to have a discussion about what the difference is between a bilingual meeting and a translated meeting, and why one is significantly more appealing than the other. But, as I said, I, I like a lot of these, but I would, I, I want us to really start, because I think we really now have developed a real sensitivity to make, to knowing why it's so important to have things translated, so I'd like us to move beyond translation.
I'm, I'm happy to see in the first bullet point about the addition of the Board Brief, I posted online. And I, I know that we've done a real good job with the agendas and the attachments in the Board Brief. I would just like to reemphasize that from a personal standpoint, I'd rather see them on Friday than on Monday or Tuesday. And for, for the most part, in the last, this year, that's been achieved, and I, I know sometimes it can't be. But I, I just know that people appreciate getting those documents on Friday rather than Monday or Tuesday. So anything we can do to make sure that happens, it's, yes, it's nice they're online. It'd be nicer if there were, before the weekend, not after the weekend.
And that's our expectation as well, and in fact, we don't hit that expectation when there's some sort of a glitch. But that's very much our expectation as well. A number of these things have really grown. E-news has really grown. E-news used to be, you know, one item, maybe two or three times a week, and now you get daily e-news. A lot of the webpage enhancements have, have really changed, a lot of putting these things on the web. The special ed reworking, special ed website has been a big change. And there are a number of things that have really grown. And we've been able to do this without additional staff, and I'm concerned about making more changes and continuing to grow, but
What is the distribution list of the e-news? What is the number of people that receive that?
Barbara Kehon can answer that question.
We have about 1,200 staff members that get e-news. We then also disseminate, I'm not sure what the number is, we have a group of members of the public that we also distribute to. of the public that we also distribute to. Those are also posted on the website. We are in the midst of doing a review right now with all schools to make sure that those staff who have computers are indeed getting e-news. It's not that we think they're getting it, but they are actually getting it. So we're going through an evaluation right now, and because sometimes, for whatever reason, folks may be dropped, or we just don't have them connected, so we're doing that at the moment. So at least 1,200 employees every, about every day.
Well, thank you very much. There's several actions, there's actions to improve board-related communication to public, actions for district office and staff-related, and actions to improve parent community. And those three separate sections, does anybody have any comment on those three separate sections?
I have, I'm over mine that this problem of communicating with low-income and minority students and their families, in my tenures here, I haven't seen much change. We don't, we don't know how to do it, or maybe if we know how to do it, we aren't doing it. And my inclination is to think that it probably requires an assignment of a responsibility to make that happen. Someone who's got, like we had with Mr. Fuerta, that, someone who can establish the rapport. And I was, I became a missionary after that meeting at Santa Barbara Junior High School. That was, that was a terrific meeting, and it had lots of lumps and warts procedurally, but it was, but what was beautiful about the meeting was people really felt free to express themselves. And I think a crucial part of that, going back to Ms. Cordero's point, was that they were doing it in their language. And I know, and I've been at meetings held in French, and I'm told later that I sound like a child, a poorly educated child. Well, when you're told that, you don't speak out very freely. Language really matters. As you know, Dr. Sarvis, I'm championing that, and I don't know whether, Mrs. Cordero could help me out on this, my sense of a bilingual meeting ultimately means you've got simultaneous interpretation. So it's going on naturally, just like listening to a meeting at the United Nations. I mean, everybody's speaking spontaneously, well, as spontaneously as you can in that body, but in their native language, and that you can understand it, that is non-problematic because you just push a button and you listen. And we listen, they listen, depends on your problem. It doesn't become a one-way kind of thing that only the people who speak Spanish have to listen to a headset. We should, we should be picking up headsets and listening as well, and let the dialogue move in a natural way and people express themselves freely. You guys won me over with that meeting, it was a terrific meeting.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just want to say that there are many ways to do a bilingual meeting, some of them don't involve headsets at all. So that, and some of them are more appropriate in smaller groups, and some of them are better for larger groups, so I think there's a variety of ways to do that. But I agree that I think that is very important.
Could we, could we ask, maybe Mr. Herron, as board president, would appoint a committee?
Well, the interesting thing is...
To give us a report on these things.
I have a future agenda item on our list.
The interesting thing is that I think we have a group of, we have, actually, I think, several groups of parents, padres unidos, padres adelantes, we have DILAC that I think would be in a great position to give us some feedback on that without having, really to convene a whole new committee who could help us with how to make our meetings more accessible and more, what do I want to say, inviting to the non-English-speaking community.
Well, Dr. Sarvis indicates we have it on the agenda for future meetings, so we'll put a package together. How about on page 15, the, one, two, three, six action plans, action points? Mrs. Cordero?
I just have a kind of a ticky-tack question, and that is, the first one is the only one that doesn't start with a verb. And I'm wondering what...
That was left out, it should be "review."
Oh, "review," okay.
We've got that, thank you.
I thought that might be, okay, thanks.
Now, this is an area, I'm sorry.
Were you finished?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. This is an area where the board could say a lot. In fact, we had verbiage under a lot of these, and we thought, well, maybe we should just show these at this point and let the board decide what they would like to do with this.
Mrs. Deacon?
I had a comment, but it was about something different. But I will, since I'm here, will say that I do like having this kind of stripped-down version because I think we do need to really focus in on these very specific things, and we may get derailed if we try to do too much. So in general, I would support going with this language. And can I just say my other piece, too? Barbara Keaney did the layout on this, and I want to compliment you on it because I think it's very inviting and I really like it. As a journalism professor, I'd be remiss in saying I would love to have captions under the photos, maybe. And I was very intrigued that Mr. Spock appears to be one of our students, so that may be worthy of a caption there, too. And if there's any way to make sure all the pictures are of our students, I know that may involve some additional work, but there may be some great photos out there already that we could integrate into this. I know some of these are our students, but maybe not all.
All of them are, except two photos that are in here, and I'll make sure that they're captioned. I would like to make one point before we move off of this altogether, and that is to thank the board for your investment in TeleParent because it has made a tremendous difference in our communication. And in fact, I got an interesting email from Joanne's here tonight. She made a comment about the fact that TeleParent improves communication to families who have low or no literacy levels, and one of the things that she hears, and I have heard from other principals as well, how it is very beneficial towards addressing the communication needs to our Hispanic community as well. So I just wanted to point that out because it's just, I was astounded by the stats I got as to how often it's being used, and again, that's because of the board investing in this system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on item F1, board focus goals? It was a very, very good discussion, and thank you for putting it together and the staff.
Thank you. We'll work, we'll work on this and we'll bring it back to you.
Okay, F2, report on academy diversity improvement plans.
Robin Swawski, our Associate Superintendent for Education, will make this presentation.
Okay, this is kind of a two-part response to that very last action that you have in our board focus goals, which is to really investigate the underrepresentation of, and that action said Latino students, and the board focus goal says underrepresented students. But in our districts, it really is looking at our Latino students in particular and their representation in our advanced courses. And one of those, what we call advanced courses, is our academies, because several of them are. They have, you know, some of the most advanced learners in there. I believe it was Dr. Noel at one of our recent meetings was commenting on the engineering academy at Dos Pueblos and the outreach that the foundation is making in collaboration with the school to the Avid programs at all of the junior highs. And that discussion worked into, you know, the diversity plan, and all of the academies in one shape or another have had plans to increase their underrepresented students. And so you've had a chance to look at the first, you know, first round of these, there wasn't, there was just the template put out. We wanted to include the data on the current demographic status of each academy, the white, Latino, and other. We wanted to have right beside that the percentage of Latinos in that high school, so you could see how that compares, and then the target and the activities. And that was all we gave the directors to work with, and so you can see they're different. They haven't probably seen each other's plans. So at this point, we have people in the audience that could answer questions about them, but this was intended just for you to comment, to ask questions, to discuss.
Mrs. Parker?
Thank you. I thought there was a lot of great work in some of these plans, and I appreciate how seriously our academy directors and the teachers within the academies are taking this issue. One of the things that I would have liked to see are the actual applications. I've looked at the applications in the past, and some of them have wording, and it's interesting, there's wording about questions around whether or not they fit the at-risk category that our partnership academies specifically are really looking for. And yet, it looks so negative that I could see, looking at the application and thinking, oh, well, if I'm going to mark yes on that, I'm not going to get into that academy, and so maybe it's true for me and I don't, I shouldn't apply. And so I'm curious if they've revised their applications. Some of their applications, used to at least, or in their frequently asked questions about the applications, talk about the donations to the academy. Has that changed? Have they changed the wording on that? I'd like to see that.
We can get that, the applications that students complete to be in the academies. We can get that.
One of the things that I wondered about in looking through is sometimes they're talking about how if you're an Avid, you can't be in an academy, things like that, but it seems like you, it would be a great fit to make an Avid part of the academy, you know, one of the pathways to an academy. And one of the concerns I had was, I think it might have been looking at the VADA, yes, I think looking in the VADA, which was terrific how detailed that plan was. But there is the one note where they're talking about, it would be useful to know the total number of students who are actually academic, prepared to participate in an academy at the college prep level or above. And I almost felt like that was a fundamental misunderstanding of the point of a partnership academy, which is really targeted for at-risk students, and that maybe, I mean, I don't know if that's always been the, I don't know if, I've never seen the original applications for the partnership academies, I mean, they've been in place for so many years at this point. But really, when I look at the partnership academy information, which Mr. Gonzalez had just gotten to us in a board brief, yes, you can be in those if you're not at risk, but they're intended for at-risk students. And so there's kind of a disconnect there, and I think that it's not remotely connected just to VADA, but it is something that I was wondering about. I was interested in looking at the engineering academy. I had had no idea that you needed to be Gate Algebra 1-2 in eighth grade, and I felt like, okay, well, here's a systemic issue that we'll be addressing, I hope, because that certainly is a problem. If we've, we could have students that were in regular Algebra 1-2 with great grades, great test scores, and yet apparently they would be kept out of the engineering academy.
I actually did ask that question. I was visiting at Dos Pueblos, and Mark Swanis, and I had that exact discussion around, because I was surprised to see that as well, that Gate geometry was a requirement. And, Mark, you may want to jump in on this, but the way it was explained, because the program right now is quite small, soon to be enlarged by hopefully, you know, a great number of students, this group of students is just the highest, highest of the group, and able, and they're able to go on to the robotics piece of that. And that really has turned out to be a piece of criteria in order to get in, that you really have to, to jump in and be a part of the academy, you know, when they first enter, you have to have that Gate geometry piece in place to be able to get it. It's highly competitive, and there's all kinds of Gate kids and high achievers that don't get in.
But what I feel like is that we have kids that are mathematically just as able, that just happen because they're not Gate identified, to be in the Algebra Gate class at some of our junior highs. And particularly, I mean, I think that they mostly draw from the Galita area, especially if you are, for example, a low-income student who is not going to have car transportation out to Dos Pueblos. It's very hard for them to draw that type of student from Santa Barbara Junior High or for La Cumbre. So it's something that I think that we need to be thinking about as we're talking about who's in the highest level classes.
Yes, and of course, our next board agenda item is going to be looking at that.
Mrs. Deacon?
There was a time at Galita Valley where they offered geometry in the eighth grade, Gate geometry in the eighth grade. I don't know if they still do or not.
Yes, they do.
They do, okay. So, but Mrs. Parker's right, we do need to make sure that students are funneled into those classes when they have the potential so that they can become eligible. And just tagging on to this point about the pool of students that are equipped to participate in the academies, for instance, at Santa Barbara High, something like 33% of our Latino students scored proficient or advanced in English language arts. I would think that that's a fairly large pool, and that, you know, the comment is made that there's a lot of programs that are kind of vying for those students, but that's nearly a third of the students at the school. So I do think that we need to make a real effort to make sure that we're not in any way dissuading students. And I completely understand the sentiment that the director particularly of VADA made in great detail about the need for support from the site to do that, the idea of a dedicated counselor at Dos Pueblos, they have a dedicated counselor for IB and the engineering academy, or at least, I mean, they do other things, but they only handle those students as opposed to sharing those students. So, you know, I think those are, those are steps that we could definitely implement right away that I would hope would help move us towards our goal.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, first of all, again, this is the first time we've done this. I think this is a fantastic idea. I really appreciate the directors of the academies for compiling these reports for us. And I hesitate to be, to be at all critical because I feel like the more detailed and the more specific that the, that the report is, then the more we have to, you know, take shots at. And I certainly don't want the academy directors to feel like that. I don't want to dissuade or provide any kind of a disincentive for providing us with these detailed accounts because I think, for example, the VADA report really was rather spectacularly detailed. And in a way that, reading these, I, like Ms. Parker, I was not aware of the Gate requirement for the engineering academy. And I felt like I really learned a lot about these programs from reading these reports. So I don't want this to become something that they're afraid to do because they're afraid we're going to, you know, be too critical. I think one of the things that I felt was really evident in these is that many of the, maybe all of the academies identified a need for additional support. Either VADA, there are a couple of things, there's more than just what I'm pointing out, but there are a couple that stood out to me. The need, especially as it relates to trying to recruit more Latino students, more timely response on translation services, and I think that's something that probably the district and maybe the, maybe the school itself needs to be more proactive in supporting. Also, one of the things that the VADA report said that I thought was really important was seek diversity in the VADA teaching team as openings naturally occur. And I think that's really probably true for all of the academies, and I was really appreciative that they pointed that out. And I'm kind of just going through these, so forgive me, I'm just kind of going through the few comments on each one. Also, we talked about the, I think, Ms. Parker, you raised the issue of whether there was this perception and whether it was in fact still a reality that the, of the donation requirements that many parents believe at least are in place in the academies. So one of the things that VADA said is to make sure that parents understand that donations are requested on a purely voluntary basis. I just want to make sure that as the requests are put out, that they're put out in a very culturally sensitive way, and not even just culturally sensitive, just generally sensitive way, so that families feel very comfortable not having, being able to participate even if they aren't able to donate. In the, there were, there was a few more things that I think were mentioned already. In the multimedia Arts and Design Academy, the MADA Academy, again, there was an item there, and there were a few other things that we can, we'll probably come back to, but there was an item there on the last page... was an item there on the last page that says counselors, ninth-grade English teachers, the very first line in that last page, counselors, ninth-grade English teachers, and coaches could be more proactive in helping to steer Latino kids toward programs in which the students have an interest, such as the MAD Academy. So, I think that's another, sort of repetition of that idea, that the academies also need some support in making sure that the students know about it. The first line of that last paragraph also was, I think, a telling statement, the issue of diversity does not have a simple solution. And I think as we've looked through these, we definitely see that that's true. And so, I think we, as a board, the district as a whole, have to take some responsibility for those as well. That whole paragraph, I thought, had some interesting comments. I was appreciative also of the fact that the Health Careers Academy included, and really in many ways focused on, the need for male students. Because I think that's something that we often, that often gets overlooked when we're discussing this, the gender balance as well as the ethnic balance, et cetera. And then, I just wanted to go back to that issue in the Engineering Academy of the Gate Geometry requirement. That's something that I think is of a high, for me, it's an immediate priority because we know from our statistics in Gate that if we have that requirement, we will continue to have disproportionately few Latinos in the program. We can claim, and I'm sure, and I don't mean to cast aspersions on anybody because I'm sure it is, in many ways, unintentional. I don't think that they set out to say, we don't want any Latinos in this program. But I don't think we can accommodate it because we, however, whether it's unintentional or not, we know for a fact what the result will be. And unless we're happy to live with that result, we cannot maintain that requirement. I personally think it has to be eliminated immediately.
Dr. Noel?
Thank you. And I appreciate the efforts that have gone into this report, and I also appreciate Mr. Gonzalez's report that we had in the board brief on California Partnership Academies. I have been voicing concern about the partnership academies for some time. And let me say, I make a very sharp distinction between the partnership academies, which are funded under state education code provisions and state funding, and have requirements that are imposed by the law, and the academies that are not part of that program. Let's be very clear, to my understanding, only the Visual Arts, VADA, and MAD academies are partnership academies. The others are our business. And totally, not, we have to obey the ed code, but they're ours. I have visited a number of partnership academies. I've been at meetings where partnership academies have been discussed widely by people who run them and people who are concerned with them. And I've read the education code provisions over and over again. And I cannot reconcile the concept of the partnership academy, which is fundamentally, in spirit and in letter, about at-risk students. I can't reconcile that with a program, quote, that includes our most advanced courses. I can't reconcile it with programs that have Gate classes. I can't reconcile it with programs that talk about rigorous admission requirements. I think that there's a fundamental contradiction. I hasten to add, I think both of the academies are terrific. I don't think they should be taking money from the California Partnership Academies program. I think that's a distortion of both the intent and the letter of the law. It's, you can price yourself out of the market figuratively by simply making it tough to get in, by having such a rigorous program. You don't have to be discriminatory, you just have a rigorous program. And I've asked the question, what would happen if you had a truly at-risk program? Now, you have to have fifty percent of the students have to be at risk, or you have to have an at-risk program for fifty percent of the students. And the answer I've received was, we would lose a lot of students to another campus. That's why, but I don't want to see these programs leave. They're good programs, but they are not at-risk programs and we don't have any at-risk programs. We have things going on within our schools. For example, I asked the question, is there, do either of these academies offer tiered intervention? Because everything I read about at-risk students is that they, tiered intervention programs are designed for them. Now, those are expensive programs, but there's money. It comes from the state for that purpose. Part of, I have friends in Montecito and friends at the high school who live in Montecito. And one very candid person says, Bob, everyone understands, the academies are a place you'd go to get the high curriculum and not have the head of regenious courses. Now, that's a pretty cynical statement, and I don't know that to be true, but I do know that the imagery of these predominantly high-achieving, predominantly white academies, which ask for up to $2,000 from parents, well, you don't have to give, but the norms are, the culture is, to give, to be part of it. That creates, those are not, those don't create a sense of inclusiveness. And I don't think you have to be overly alienated to look at that and say, they don't want me there. And then you wonder, why aren't we getting at-risk kids applying? This is a no-brainer to me. And I would ask, how much, now, I've read some of the letters that solicit the funds, I think it was a couple thousand, twenty-two hundred at one of them. And then I tried to investigate and learn that, you know, let me explain something about the partnership academies. The state, this is changing, right? State gave eighty thousand a year. The district had to produce eighty thousand in in-kind contribution through various forms like the lesser teaching load, is a great place to teach, you only have a hundred and fifty students a year, right? And the rest is supposed to come from business partners in the community. The best I understand, and I stand corrected if this is incorrect, but in fact, the contributions from business partners at those academies does not match the contributions from the district and the state, and that's made up by money solicited from parents. That really is inappropriate, given the spirit and the letter of the law for partnership academies, and very exclusive. If you figure it out, you know, when you, you take fifty percent of the incoming class has to be at-risk. What percent of the at-risk population are Latino? Fairly high? Quite high?
You mean at the schools?
Generally speaking, at the schools, you know, it's around pushing ninety percent, isn't it? Yeah. Well, then you take, not that high, okay, take eighty percent. Eighty percent of fifty percent is forty students, or forty percent. Then you look at Visual Arts with twenty-three percent. You look at MAD with, where'd it go?
Three percent.
With eight percent. And this hasn't changed in years. So, I, you know, I conclude that there has not been a good faith effort. Because a good faith effort would require changing the nature of the program and making it genuinely a welcome place, a supporting place for at-risk students. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Dr. Noel, any other comments?
I would like to respond to that. I'll be brief. We have been looking at this and we may, in fact, have to abandon the partnership academy. Not abandon the academy, but abandon the partnership. Because...
Because the question as to whether this actually qualifies as an at-risk program is a very important one, and that's something we take seriously. So, we will be coming back to you on that.
Mrs. Deacon?
Can I just ask one quick question? And I am in complete agreement that we need much more diversity in these academies. The definition of at-risk in, that was been provided to us, says that students have to qualify under three of the following criteria. Past record of irregular attendance, past record of underachievement, one grade level below, past record of low motivation or disinterest. Those are different criteria than fail, academic failure. And so, I'm wondering how, have we quantified these at-risk behaviors in any way to see how that meshes with the attendance rate or the acceptance rate at the academies?
Well, we've taken a look directly at how those apply to the partnership academies at Santa Barbara High School. And what we see is a different standard applied, particularly in terms of lower math scores for students who, I suppose arguably, should be scoring at a higher level, and that that is being used as the pass-through definition of at-risk and not these variables. Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to say more?
I think that the critical point that's being made here is while the ed code section that governs California Partnership Academies does permit non-at-risk students to enter the academies, as Dr. Noel has very clearly stated, the primary target for these programs are at-risk students with the definition that you've outlined. And so, we need to look at, why are we not? And, you know, as I look at the diversity plans that have been presented, they are plausible, they're reasonable, but it does not get to the heart of the matter. We have an obligation, if we're going to continue California Partnership Academy funding, to make sure that fifty percent of the students in those programs meet that criteria, period.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just wanted to sort of own the problem, I guess. And that is, that I don't, I don't think it's just, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't know, helpful to just say that the academies themselves have not made a good faith effort. I think those of us who have been on the board for a while can also question whether the board has made a good faith effort. Because I have said, I think we ought to hold, whether it's Gate or the academies or the AP courses, et cetera, accountable. For longer than I've been on the board, for about the last twenty-five, thirty years, I have been active in monitoring how Latino students have participated and the extent to which they have not participated in higher-level courses. And I have repeatedly stated that I think programs that have existed over a period of time without making measurable improvements ought to be eliminated. Otherwise, we continue to have, you know, situations where our similar schools ranked can be ten for white students and two for Latino students at the exact same school. Unless we are willing to hold them accountable in a meaningful way, then we, I think, we are shirking our responsibility.
Further comments? Okay, I'm going to take a ten-minute break. We'll come back at eight fifteen, eighteen. Eight eighteen on the nose, guys. Now, we're back to meeting. Item F3, study of secondary Gate courses and honor courses as they relate to the board focus goal to increase participation of underrepresented students in advanced courses.
Well, this is a topic we've been discussing for quite some time. There are a number of key issues. I will identify very quickly just two of them. One is whether the label Gate imposes an artificial barrier, a barrier that does not serve our students, especially our underrepresented students, well, who could otherwise be successful in these rigorous courses. And of course, the other question is whether by changing from the label Gate to honors, which is a change that other school districts made years ago across the state, whether we can maintain the rigor and the standards in those courses that we have traditionally expected, or move them even to higher levels. And I think we have answers to those questions tonight. And I will turn this over to Robin Swawsky, our Associate Superintendent for Education, to lead the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I have actually waited for this for quite a while. This is an issue that is near and dear to my heart, and I know it is for many people and people in the room. I think we're really dealing with an ethical, moral issue and deals with social justice and equal access. And as Brian said, it's, it issue's not a new one. It's come up, it's bubbled up in many venues and many different groups that I've been. And it seems like, in the words of David Ortiz, our principal at La Colina, and some of you that are in the room that know David well will laugh, I saw it as a concern when it first came to the district five years ago. It kind of grew to a problem, and now, it's a huge issue. And as things like that go, when you don't deal with them, when they're a concern, they grow, and now, it really is a big issue. And I also kind of laughed, I said to Brian, and I didn't know if you'll find this funny or not, but as I, as I was looking at this and doing some work and getting it ready, I noticed that it was February 2nd Groundhog Day. And I thought, oh, like the movie Groundhog Day, this just keeps coming back. And we want to make sure that we address it fully today, or tonight. I also want to say that this issue's not unique to Santa Barbara school districts, but we have not seriously addressed it. And I think Mrs. Cordero, for one, mentions it a lot, and that we really do need to take ownership here and look at the issue head-on and how we can address it. So, I think we will find some interesting data tonight. I was as late as this afternoon looking at data and poring over, as you know, Davis Hayden is gone, Dr. Hayden, and so, I was working with one of the other people in the department, and he was trying to get things for me as fast as I can. So, there's stuff that you haven't seen yet. You should have a packet in front of you, and I had thirty-five available out in the room, so I hope that they're there for you. The first thing you see that Mr. Hittjunk has up here is, I always like to have an agenda so you know where I'm going, and I've been talking about the purpose right now for conducting the study, that we see a big issue here, and we've been talking about it all night. So, the first piece of information is I want to have Sandy Robertson come up, who is our coordinator for secondary Gate and has been a Gate teacher and has been working with us on this presentation. And she's going to give a little background. You have her points in a written thing, she will review what she has there, but the background of a program review and also some current research that she did for all of us on effective programs.
May I just ask that the timer be turned off?
Oh, yes.
No, I can do this in thirty seconds. No. Is this on? Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, and I just want to say, as I listened to your conversation, I said to a couple of you at the break that, as Robin said, I've been a teacher, a teacher of all levels of students, actually, grade seven through twelve for my thirty-eight years as a classroom teacher, and enjoyed all of them, and knew that every student could achieve and every student with appropriate instructional strategies and patience, of course, could achieve at higher levels. So, in my role as Gate coordinator, I saw it as a wonderful opportunity, besides just taking care of the organizational things, to provide professional development for teachers, for all teachers. to provide professional development for teachers, for all teachers, to increase their understanding and use of differentiated strategies for all kids, not just GATE strategies. And I don't think I've ever seen a set of board-focused goals as systematic as what you've undertaken. And it, it feels like home to me, so to speak, because I've been in the district a long time and I appreciate your efforts in addressing the concerns that you are. So, thank you. And I'm one of the groundhogs that keeps coming back because, as Robin said, just two years ago, when Paul Turnbull was here, we undertook a year-long study of the, of the GATE program. At that time, in the spring of '08, we received, both the elementary and the secondary district received from the State Department of Education, a rating of exemplary for our GATE programs. And one of the reasons it was exemplary is not only because we're serving our GATE-identified kids extremely well, but we were continuing to make outreach to try to increase the underrepresented students in the program. But it also spoke to the professionalism of the teachers, the challenging curriculum, and the parent involvement that combined to make the excellent program that we have. The plan is reviewed at the state level by a group of experts in GATE education, and they made a particular note in the 2008 plan of the strong parent support that our GATE program has. So, we received the five-year plan. Now, whether we have to apply again in five years is going to be dependent upon state funding, of course. But regardless of whether we're required to or not, the GATE office will strive to serve students and teachers and the parent community and to work toward that goal of increasing the underrepresented population. Anyway, at that time, Mr. Turnbull asked us to look at exactly this issue of changing the name from "GATE" to "Honors Program", and the idea would be we have an honors program that serves the needs of our GATE students and our hard-performing students. The committee consisted of district and school administrators, and we also had some, uh, school administrators from outside the Santa Barbara school district, some of our feeder districts. A board of education member came to those meetings. Robin came to a few. Counselors from the high school and junior highs came. We had teachers and parents. And mirroring the state's review of the GATE program, that review committee found that all stakeholders, our parents, teachers, and students whom we survey every year, also were extremely pleased with the level of education that their students received. Everyone gave it extremely satisfied ratings. So, we've been doing well, but we know we can do better. They also reviewed some exemplary GATE programs from, throughout California, again with the purpose of determining what kind of intervention processes we could put in place for those students who were not necessarily achieving, especially if we had issues with underrepresented students, and including the social and emotional support systems for those students, and a parent education program. That's a big aspect of every district's GATE program, elementary through secondary, is providing information for parents, and we've done quite a bit of work in that area, too. Well, then, as you know, Mr. Turnbull left, and we suffered some budget cuts. And Robin, thankfully, and you have taken up this mantle again. So, at her request, I did a review of some Southern California secondary districts who have achieved the exemplary status. And those were in Southern California, because we, if we decide we want to visit some, it would be realistic to have them close by. So, the ones we looked at were San Diego Unified, San Ana Unified, Burbank Unified School District, Long Beach Unified, and Rialto Unified School District. I read each of their GATE plans, and I talked with some of the GATE coordinators by phone if I could get ahold of them, or we had email exchanges. And I've listed the six, I think it's six, six major differences. Or, we might have aspects of this, but here are the things that make their programs exemplary. Number one, each of the above exemplary districts requires teachers, if they can get the union to agree, or if they can't require, they strongly recommend and then offer financial support for all teachers who work with gifted students to be GATE-certified. So, they either work in cooperation with a local university, or they bring in outside presenters and they set up a professional development plan so the teachers can become certified in differentiated strategies. San Diego, Long Beach, and Rialto offer extensive district support with GATE certification. And then, they also have ongoing professional development for teachers who are already certified. They offer after-school and evening programs. They offer Saturday workshops. And they also offer a great deal of parent education. A typical model might be, a presenter would come maybe 3:30 to 5:30 for teachers, and then there'd be a brief dinner break, and parents would come in for an evening session. So, there's lots and lots of that going on in those districts. Other districts may not offer the in-house professional development, but they provide support for their teachers going through the certification process. Again, by paying their registration fees. They understand that we can't pay teachers for their units if it's going through a university because of the salary issue, but they give them support to help them achieve this level of professional development. They also offer extensive and comprehensive supports for underrepresented students. We have AVID, and that's great. I'm delighted to see that here. But there are other programs, GEAR Up, Excel, and other mentoring or tutorial opportunities throughout the district. Exemplary districts offer open enrollment at the high school level and do not call their classes "GATE", with the exception of Rialto. Each school's GATE plan refers to GATE classes and our GATE program, but that's within the plan itself as a descriptor. But the, the highest-level academic program is called the Honors Program, which serves GATE students in a variety of ways. Exemplary districts' outreach to underrepresented students begins in early, early elementary school. And I'll reference that article that I included of, in your board packet or Robert included, about the San Diego Elementary School that trained their kindergarten, first, and second-grade teachers in differentiation strategies with the hope that they could help students who were going to be identified GATE probably anyway, but help them get their needs met earlier in their career. And secondly, for those students who might not quite make, pass the GATE test, that their thinking skills or higher-level thinking skills and concept development would be enhanced, and they would stand a better chance of being identified when they were all tested at the end of second grade or the end of third grade. So, I think that's a very exciting possibility. And the review of other districts' best practices confirms the findings of the previous GATE review committee to require or strongly recommend certification of all teachers working with gifted students, to provide ongoing professional development for teachers and counselors working with gifted students, to begin preparation for students' advanced academic achievement in early elementary school, and to require all elementary teachers, from the secondary position, I can say that, to become GATE-certified, and to provide extensive and comprehensive academic support for underrepresented students beginning in elementary school. And again, as a teacher for many years in this district, that's been my observation. I've worked with many, many underrepresented students in my GATE and Honors classes and the at-level classes I taught. And I think that piece of extra support, academic support during the school day and after the school day might be over. It's beginning to happen with our response to intervention, but not as extensively as it should. So, that's a, a review of my research, and if I can answer any questions for you, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mrs. Robertson. Any questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sandy, for giving that background. Oh, we have one.
Let me know at what point you think we should have public comment.
I, I was thinking afterward.
Okay.
I had just a couple of questions, sort of clarifying questions on the data. In your third paragraph on the first page, where you talk about "The review committee found that all stakeholders were extremely pleased with the level of education students receive." That, so that refers to the stakeholders of, regarding students who are currently in the program?
Correct.
Okay. So, the ones who were actually in the program felt like they were receiving a, a strong program?
Correct. And we did, we did seek, as members on that committee, a counselor who worked with underrepresented students at the high school, a parent. And so, they were satisfied, too, but it was largely, it was, they were referring to the kids that were identified and in the program.
And who makes up the, the board or the, the committee that grants exemplary status?
Well, that's a, a panel of experts selected from people known throughout the state. I've been asked to come and read GATE applications.
So, are they usually GATE coordinators?
Yes, GATE coordinators. There might be GATE teachers, maybe someone from a university such as Sandra Kaplan. I don't know if she's actually done it, but someone who's well-versed in GATE education. And they read the applications, similar to the way you'd read distinguished school applications with a rubric and a rating scale and so forth.
Okay. And then, one last question. In our district, can you tell me how many, what, like, maybe, maybe you know this precisely or maybe you can just give me a ballpark figure. What percentage of our teachers in the GATE program are teachers of color?
Oh, good question. I, I know them. You know, I start seeing their faces, but I don't know a percentage. I could name the ones. I could count them in my head. At Santa Barbara High, there's at least, you know, maybe I shouldn't do that off the top of my head. Let me email you that information.
Okay. Thank you.
But we do have them, and we're, I know we are constantly seeking their inclusion. And we encourage them to become certified as well.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. So, that sets the stage here as far as where we've been in the, in the review and effective districts, exemplary districts. So, the next piece is the, is the data that you've seen. And Dave, if you can put that, that one horizontal that says "GATE data" up at the top. This is one that the board received in the packet, but I just wanted to, I know the public hasn't seen it necessarily. It just shows first the percentage of GATE students in GATE courses. So, it gives the number of GATE courses at all of our secondary schools. Then, it shows, this is the average percentage of GATE students in those GATE courses. And that's kind of an interesting figure. In some cases, we're going from like, you know, maybe a 3%. In fact, I'll give a, I'll give an example. If you see in La Cumbre Junior High, for instance, the range of, in percentage of GATE students in courses labeled "GATE" goes from 3% in one to 53% in another. That average averages out to 20%. Interestingly enough, in the case of La Cumbre, and we laugh about Joanne in La Cumbre being the poster child here, and you're gonna hear from her a little bit later. In the Algebra 1-2 GATE course, which is also down below as far as statistics on that, at La Cumbre, there are three courses, three classes. One has 52% GATE-identified students, one has 4% GATE-identified students, one has 11% identified. And that's, you know, master schedule kinds of things and when the kids can take it. From that rather low percentage of GATE-identified courses compared to some of the others that have 100%, they have the highest number of proficient algebra students in the whole district. I believe it's 89% proficient. So, in the case of those percentages, and we'll see some more data, it doesn't really seem, it seems to be an insignificant piece there. But that's just some information on where we are with our courses. The bottom part, I don't know if, Dave, you can lift it up a little bit so people can see it. I found this very interesting. I selected with the help of Davis. We looked through all of our GATE courses and found the GATE courses, one in junior high and one in high school, that had the most number of kids in them. So, we wanted to look at, at a good sample size. And in the case of the junior high Algebra 1-2, you can see that the 108 non-GATE students, their math, California Standards Test mean score was 419, and the grade in the class is 3, 3.39. And then, the GATE, 430 CST score with a lower grade point, 3.36. And then, you can see the information on the high school English 10 GATE course. 105 kids with the mean score of 398 and 3.42 grade. And then, the GATE students with a 428 with a grade in the class of 3.67. With this, with the exception of the 10th grade English difference in that CST mean score, which is about its 30 points, that's, that's becoming a significant variance. It's not huge. All the others are insignificant. So, Davis really, you know, said, this shows that our non-GATE students in those GATE courses, of which we heard from Sandy, are highly rigorous and, you know, the parents and the students are very pleased with them. They're doing exceptionally well, both with the scores at the end of the, you know, course and with their grades.
And that is a key point in this presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Fascinating information.
So, you've seen that. I gathered more, though. Dave, do you want to put the next landscape one on? What I looked at next was I tried to, you can see the range. We go way below 350 on the, for the CST scores. It's way down below for, far below basic, basic. Proficient starts right at 350. Yeah, that probably is helpful to get it up there. Thank you. This is just English Language Arts. Proficient is at 350. 393 is where advanced starts, and it goes all the way to 600 for your CST. So, the mean score of our GATE students, and these are all English Language Arts courses, GATE courses in 7th through 12th grade, their mean score is 432. The honors, current honors students is right behind them with 421, well above where advanced hits. So, of course, there are students, there are outliers on, on either end. But it's interesting to see that between the honors courses we have and the students that are in them and the GATE courses, these are the scores they're getting on their standard measurement. So, it shows that, in my mind, it shows that those honors courses and those GATE courses, number one, the students that are in them are not necessarily all that different as far as how they're performing, and the rigor and high level of coursework can't be that different based on what we're seeing here. Now, you know, again, there are outliers. There's large numbers of students here, but this is the mean.
Before you shift off of that, I'd like to emphasize the point that there's considerable variance, that, that this population really extends down quite low. And for example, if you took those means and you said, okay, well, I see that in English Language Arts that 393 is the point at which students are advanced. Let's just limit this class to students who are 393 and above. Many of these kids would not be in that class.
Correct.
The numbers on the variance are standard deviation?
Standard deviations, no, but I've looked at the ranges, and they are considerable.
Okay. So, we're not, so we're not looking at clusters around those means?
No.
No, we're not.
Are they, are they symmetrical or are they skewed? They're asymmetrical, yes.
They are.
Interestingly enough, too, in that, the, one of the data sets I'll show, show later, they're within the group of English Language Arts courses, the GATE students in that course that had below a 375 proficient level, so way down here. 30% of those students were GATE-identified. So, it's really kind of all over the place, and even more so in the math.
Well, I was gonna ask, when you talk about the range and the variance of these students, do the two groups seem to have the same range and variance? Or is it more predominant in one group versus the other?
Oh, I'd have to look at that. Do you know?
Yeah, I was looking at raw, well, not raw scores, but scaled scores. And I wasn't looking at a picture of it, but, but from looking at that, the picture in my mind was that these two populations blended so considerably that they would not be identified as separate populations.
So, then, let's go down to the math.
I just wanted to underline, the, the variance issue is a big one, it seems to me.
Yes.
Because it seems to say that, even though you're talking about high-end courses, the, the need for differentiation of those courses, am I reading that correctly?
That, that the need for differentiation?
The need for differentiation in instruction within those courses, if you have high variance.
Oh.
That's how, that's how I read it.
That...
I suppose that's one way to see it.
Yeah, I could, I, yeah. There's certainly all kinds of learners in those, in that group.
Okay.
Yes.
The variance wouldn't be any greater in this population than in other populations, would it? The variance?
I do not know.
Differentiation is gonna take place no matter where you are along the scale.
Exactly.
That's, okay, yes.
Well, essentially, if you took a, if you took a look at the two populations, you would see that's sort of an overlap and, here, here we go. Such that you could not identify them as separate populations. I mean, there's not a significant difference between the two populations.
So, looking at the math, it's slightly different. The proficient, where advanced starts is a little bit higher at 414. This is the state. The state sets these. And you can see in this case, the honors mean score is a little bit lower. It is in the proficient, the high proficient range. It is above 375, which we're gonna talk about in, in a little bit. But, but that's how the math plays out. There are a lot more students in our math, GATE, and honors classes, by the way. Okay, next one.
I just wanted to mention, I'm just reflecting a little bit on our, our own family experience. And the variance was, when I think about it, didn't think of those terms, but the, the differences within GATE classes were substantial. So, there's a lot of variance. And for at least two or three families I know, the variance... And for at least two or three families I know, the variance drove them into private school.
Interesting.
So I think, I think that we, I have in my notes already, but I'd like to hear a conversation about universal access and differentiation. And that seems to me that's something to monitor, not just to say we're going to train people to do that, but to really ride herd on that, that we have really effective differentiation in the classes would be terribly important to the success of this integration.
That's correct. And actually, that's correct for all of our students, but particularly with our advanced learners.
You will see that later at the head of the list for professional development plan in the proposal.
It very much tops the list. Okay, next set of data on GATE and honors. And we're looking at the GATE courses right now in our, can it be enlarged? I don't know. Okay, and this is our 7th through 12th GATE courses. And you can see in the English Language Arts, the total number of students enrolled is 2,096. Those students with CST scores of 375, which was kind of that midpoint of proficient and above, are 1,774, 85% of our students. And the reason we're looking at 375 is in, we've been doing a lot of meeting with principals and staff and all, and 375 is kind of, there are different measures out there, different criteria. 375 seemed to be one that kind of hits where most people are looking. It's different at different schools. And within that, I just looked in this one set, these two sets here with math and English Gates, there was 69% of those students were white and 18% Latino. So that kind of mirrors the difference we've been seeing in the whole district. And then those below were 15% below the 375. And then math, you can see again, in this case, there are only 2,032 students enrolled. And that is very much split, 54 to 46 is very close as far as who's 375 and above and who's below that. And I noticed in looking at the larger, the huge, that's a big data set to be looking at, I just looked at individual students and scores. Some of those kids that are in the GATE classes that are below 375, some of those, and again, it's one test, but are down to like in the 200s. It was below 300 even, below basic, which was interesting, a real outlier. There weren't a lot of them, but there were some. Okay, so let's go down to the next. Now we're looking at honors. And maybe you can just push that up. Thank you. And we've got English Language Arts honors, a lot more students number-wise, 3,065 that are in our English Language Arts honors. And again, the 375, 70% of them are over that, very close to what the other one looked like. And, well, not very close, 85%, but closer, and 30% with below 375. But the math is something that I kind of went, wow, that's something we need to look at. And this is performance of students after they've had the math course. So those 1,573, you see those numbers are reversed. The students that score above 375, it's only 33% of those kids in honors classes right now. Or I guess it was, I believe he was looking at fall kids enrolled and their last CSTs, of course, were last spring. And then 67%, well, yeah, below. So that's, that was definitely something that stood out to me as, you know, as part of the presentation, but I thought, I'm going to leave this in here. It's something we need to look at and look at what's happening in those math courses, who's in those math courses and the honors math courses. So it's just kind of a side thing to our discussion today. But trying to be transparent and every piece of data I get, I'm showing you. So here we are. And then looking at all the advanced courses and the grades from there, you can see there's really very little difference. The GATE students' average grade, 3.49, the non-GATE average, 3.11. So above a 3.0. And then some additional ethnicity data that I got right at the last minute, I said to our person up there, Sasha, could you find out the number of white and Latino students not enrolled in any of these courses, and just in English, because I knew it took them a while, and that have a 375 or above? There are a lot of our students. I kind of went, wow, to that one. 2,500, and it's white students and 900 Latino students that are scoring above, I know several, you know, large groups of students who are in our GATE and honors courses right now. So I found that very interesting. I'm going to stop. I don't have any more data right now. I think you probably are thinking the same thing I did. I have 10 questions now for every piece that I have here, more data that I want to get and look at, or questions about it. I'll try to answer. I'm sure Brian can help me with some of this.
I think we'll go to public comment now.
Oh.
And we have people.
Before the plan? Okay.
We've had people who have left and people who have to leave.
Okay.
It might be students, et cetera. So we have, how many now, nine? Is it still nine or is it more than nine?
Well, we'll see. We'll see who's still here.
Okay, we'll go with two minutes each.
Okay. So Todd Borden, is Todd Borden here? Okay. Followed by Jose Pepe Gil.
My name is Todd Borden and I'm a teacher at Dos Pueblos High School. And this is my 20th year of teaching GATE. And I think I have a pretty good kind of longitudinal look at it. When I first started teaching in 1990, and I'm talking about English 9 GATE because I was involved in, then my memory is very good about it, about 20% of the students were identified, were actually enrolled in GATE, English 9. Six years ago, when I was at DP, the number had risen to 25% of 9th graders enrolled in English 9 GATE. And right now, at DP, we have 31.2% of our students in GATE. And you would think that there would, that might be an encouraging sign, that there would be kind of the rising tide lifts all boats type effect, but it really hasn't been that way. The ethnicity really hasn't changed. And right now, we've got over 80% of our GATE students are white right now. And so there's a really large gap there. And it doesn't seem to be that the increasing numbers of GATE students have, you know, been underrepresented students. It seems like white students are able to kind of play the game better and get in the classes more effectively. We have a very large achievement gap. I could point to all kinds of metrics in regards to that. And if there were more, there was more time, I would. I'd like to just leave you with a quote that is in some of the race to the top information lately. And this is from the Achieve Institute. And they have a quote in there that says, "The research is clear. The courses a student takes in high school are a stronger predictor of post-secondary success than poverty, SAT scores, grades, or parent education." And I think it's really incumbent on us to assist the students to gain these classes so they can gain the college readiness that I know DP is moving towards more than anything else. And so I'd like to encourage you to move in that direction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Borden.
Mr. Gil and April Lopez. April?
Good evening. My name is Pepe Gil and I'm currently a junior enrolled at San Rampa High School. I've organized something in order to tell you sort of about my experiences and why I think the GATE program should be reconstructed. I'm speaking in front of you tonight to tell you of my experiences in every type of education provided by our school system, from general education, college prep, to advanced placement classes. We are faced with a monumental issue. There's an unbelievably high achievement gap in our schools. This issue cannot be tolerated in one night, cannot be tackled in one night. There are simply too many factors involved. However, in your hands tonight, you have the power to make strides towards eliminating this gap. In addition, I'm here on behalf of myself to speak to you, to motivate you to restructure the GATE program. I'll take you back to my honors chemistry class last year. I was placing this highest level, I was placing the highest level of chemistry offered due to my intellectual capability, as I've been labeled. The first day of walking into class, I was immediately taken back by the absence of students who looked like me. I was approximately one of five students out of the total 35 who identified him or herself as a student of color. My fellow classmates and I, feeling isolated, began to question why were we even put in this class? You see, I did not test in the GATE. In fact, I failed to test miserably in 7th grade when I took it. However, after, after excelling in the first part of 8th grade, I earned my place in GATE, where I felt accomplished and I felt a sense of pride in my parents. I am the distinct example that students who are told they're incapable intellectually then would go on to prove their capability and ability to succeed in this GATE program. My younger sister, a now GATE AP student, was originally accepted into high-level education in junior high. However, due to the limit of students per class exceeding its capacity, she was not accepted. These are some of the unbelievably high numbers of the population of students and parents who are denied the opportunity to learn up to their potential. What I am suggesting is that work be done in order to give students who have proved their capability to receive the best education possible. Being a student currently involved in AP classes, where the teacher is more qualified and the curriculum is rigorous and interesting, to a college prep, general education class, where I received a teacher who was teaching Algebra 3-4, when the past 15 years of his career he had spent teaching physics. We must make change tonight in order to promote higher-level learning and equal opportunities for all students in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. April Lopez, followed by Madeline Ranson.
Hello, my name is April Lopez and I am currently a senior at Dos Pueblos High School. I am part of the Equity and Excellence in Education Committee, or Triple E Committee. I co-chair in the Subcommittee on Relations in School Culture, where we talk about how to improve our school, which includes discussing the GATE program and other school issues. Six years ago, when I was in Adams Elementary School, I didn't really know what GATE meant. All I knew was that you had to be smart in order to be in that program and that there were mostly white people in GATE. I would always hear my friends talking about some test that they would have to take in order to be in GATE. But I would also hear some of my white friends saying that they never even had to take that test to be in GATE, that they were somehow just in the GATE program. My mom wanted me to be in the GATE, wanted me to be in GATE, but because she really didn't know English and didn't really know how to talk, who to talk to, she didn't know what I had to do to get into GATE. When I moved on to La Cumbre Junior High School, I didn't even think there was a GATE program there. And maybe that was because there weren't that many white students in my junior high school. During my first three years of high school, I didn't realize that GATE was at Dos Pueblos High School until I met new people that told me that they were in GATE classes. Those people started telling me about how their grades were weighted and I didn't think that that was fair. It wasn't until that I joined the Triple E Committee that I found out that GATE was just an acronym. When I first heard what it stood for, I was in shock. I was asking myself, what are they, what are they trying to say with the name Gifted and Talented Education? Are they trying to say that not everyone is gifted and talented? This just made me feel bad because I never got offered to be in the Gifted and Talented Education program. If the school board makes the GATE program inclusive, it would allow students of color who have good grades to be better prepared for a higher education, not only because they took a test that told them that they were gifted and talented, but because their academic efforts should be equally recognized. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lopez. Couldn't agree more. Madeline Ranson, followed by Maria Samudio.
My name is Maddie Ranson. I'm a senior at San Marcos High School and I've been in the GATE program for eight years. While I value the in-depth coursework the GATE program has to offer, I am bothered by the exclusive nature of these classes. My school is 50.2% Latino, but when looking around a GATE classroom, the majority of people I see are white and belong to the middle or upper classes. These are students who have been in the same classes together since 7th grade, some even earlier. And with a heavy course load of all weighted core classes, the people they see every day are of a similar race and socioeconomic background. In the GATE program, one is made to feel privileged. GATE teachers often begin a new semester by defining that their class is for those who are gifted and talented, the cream of the crop. As of now, qualifying as a gifted and talented student means that one has passed the GATE test, which seems not to be a good measure of talent or intelligence. It is because of this that more colleges have recently begun looking more at personal essays, grades, and letters of recommendation to determine their applicant's acceptance, because basing their decisions on standardized test scores is not proving to be a good measure of a student's actual potential. Because students enrolled in the GATE program are made to feel special and have been grouped together for their whole junior high and high school careers, it seems that they sometimes have a tendency to look down upon students who do not fit their mold. The sense of superiority can often be the root of conscious or unconscious racism. In fact, just yesterday, I was discussing this issue with a friend of mine in an advanced placement science class. And when I proposed that the GATE program perpetuated racism and should therefore be more inclusive to all students, my friend said, that is ridiculous. Racism doesn't exist in schools anymore. I just don't want morons in my classes who won't do the work. This is obviously an extreme example, but many classmates responded with similar attitudes. I can't help but wonder if they are really trying, what they're really trying to protect, their own access to rigorous classes or their feelings of superiority. It makes sense that there are just as many gifted and talented people of color as there are gifted white people. It seems that there should be a new measure of determining this. It is unfair to have such a blatant separation in the classroom. Can I keep going, more? Okay.
We're allowing the students to finish their comments.
Okay. I, for one, did not pass the GATE test and have received a grade no less than a B+ in all of my years in the program. I was admitted to the program because my teachers and parents, who knew the importance of a more rigorous curriculum advocated for me. This would be more difficult for parents who do not speak English or who do not realize that the chances of their child going to college are increased with participation in these weighted classes. It would also be harder for such parents to recognize the importance of taking the GATE test. I think the GATE classes should be open to any student willing to do the work.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ranson. Maria Samudio, followed by, is it, Belia Romero? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Maria Samudio and I'm a UCSB senior, as well as the product of this district's K-12 education and its GATE program. And I'm here to urge you to support the restructuring of GATE that the district has proposed. The GATE program provided me with the critical thinking tools that have become invaluable to me in my four years at UCSB. However, this program also gave me a feeling of isolation, fostered by having no mirrors of my culture in my classes, while my white peers did. This feeling of isolation spread into my relationships with my family. And through the process of being immersed in a learning culture that did not provide me with culturally relevant material, it became harder and harder for me to connect with my family. Creating a GATE program that fosters the inclusion of a diverse group of students may be the first step to address the isolation this program creates for certain students. I know that in these difficult financial times, beginning the process of radically changing a program that seems to be doing so well seems contradictory if not impossible. However, I urge you to analyze the ways in which leaving the GATE program the way it is would be more detrimental. Creating a school within a school, as the GATE programs essentially do, defines the success of one group of students against other students seen as less achieving. Supporting the district's recommendation would open gates to many other students and work towards debunking these myths of achievement. While I was never explicitly told by any of my educators, the message was implied that my being in GATE meant that I was somehow better than students that were not in these classes. Concretely, this was shown through disparities in resources and the ability levels of my teachers.
30 seconds.
They had experience and tried to connect our lessons to our lived realities. In the classes that I took that were not in the GATE program, the teachers always seemed more stressed. It was possibly due to the larger class sizes. The GATE program created a school setting for me that was dynamic, fun, creative, rigorous, and nurturing. This type of learning environment should not be solely provided for one group of students. It does a disservice to the school and to the school, to the students and the school as a whole, who by refusing to teach all students in a way that is challenging, demanding, and nurturing, leaves vast amounts of potential untapped.
Thank you, Ms. Samudio.
Thank you.
Belia Romero, followed by Nicole.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Belia Romero. Yo represento ILAC Dos Pueblos. Yo quisiera saber por qué existen estas clases de GATE, por qué esa desigualdad con los latinos, si todos tienen la misma capacidad de aprender y las mismas ganas de participar y salir adelante.
Hi, my name is Belia Romero and I represent Dos Pueblos High School, ILAC. I would like to know why the GATE classes exist, because they create inequality for Latinos and we all have the same potential to learn and the desire, the desire to participate and succeed.
Segundo punto, yo tengo una hija en Olira Vale y ella me preguntó por qué hace unos días, por qué su amiga estaba en clases de GATE si solamente tenía F en sus clases. Y por qué ella no podía estar en la misma clase si tenía mejores calificaciones. qué ella no podía estar en la misma clase si tenía mejores calificaciones. Yo solamente pregunto, ¿qué puede hacer la mesa directiva para que tengan la misma oportunidad?
And my second point is, I have a daughter at Galita Valley Junior High, and she asked me a few days ago why her friend was in GATE classes when she was failing her classes, and why she couldn't be in the same classes if she had better grades than she did. I ask what the school board can do so that all students can have the same opportunities.
Gracias, señor Romero. Nicole?
Dinkelacher.
I'm sorry. There's no last name listed, so.
That's okay.
Followed by Sal Guareña.
My name is Nicole Dinkelacher and I'm the co-chair of the Equity and Excellence in Education Committee that exists at DP High School. This is a Subcommittee of the PTSA. It includes English-speaking parents, Spanish-speaking parents, the principal, our assistant principals, teachers, students, community members, ELAC members, and counselors at the school. And together, we have formed three subcommittees. One focuses on academics, the other focuses on fundraising and development, and the third focuses on relationships and the school culture. You heard from April earlier, she leads that Subcommittee. And we have another Subcommittee that's also led by students. What I want to point out is what the academic Subcommittee said about the GATE issue, which was the first issue that they wanted to tackle for equity and excellence. First of all, it said this issue was explained as GATE no longer being GATE. GATE should only be the top five to ten percent of the population, but currently, they have forty percent of students in English at DP are in GATE. Todd mentioned thirty-one percent. They need to, we need to readdress the requirements to get into GATE. This shouldn't just be a parent phone call into the counselors, instead, it needs to be a teacher recommendation or a grade from a previous year. Currently, there's no accountability for GATE teachers, unlike AP, where teachers report to the college board, get syllabus approved, have AP test results. Suggested transitioning to an honors-based system.
Thirty seconds.
And the weighted grade, weighted grade seems to be a huge incentive and sometimes only incentive for students to take GATE. Get rid of it altogether or make a different course, i.e. honors available with the weighted grade.
Thank you very much. Sal Guareña, followed by Alina Marie.
Board President, Heron, members of the school board, Dr. Sarvis and Ms. Hawaski. Sal Guareña, current Chair of the United Parents Padres Unidos. Also this year is President of DILAC and co-chair of the Dos Pueblos. PTSA Committee on Equity and Excellence in Education, also known as Triple E. One of Triple E's academic goals is to promote the optimal level of performance of each of the students regardless of background. And another one of our academic goals is that teachers, parents, students, community members, and leadership, that they are able to work together as one unit in order to ensure equity and excellence for all. So I come to you to voice my support for any proposal under your review that would create a rigorous honors program that is much more accessible to students of color, classes that would still include GATE students, but where other high-achieving students could qualify on the basis of test scores, GPA, and teacher recommendations. I also support any proposal that would include professional development for teachers of GATE classes so that they may be able to teach more diverse classes at the same advanced level. And an implementation plan for restructured honors program, serving GATE and other advanced students is long overdue. Now, reviewing the percentages of Latinos in GATE in the secondary schools, we noted that in every school except La Colina, there was a drop over the past six years.
Thirty seconds.
Anecdotally, through my role within UPPU and also through Dos Pueblos ELAC and DILAC, we've regularly heard from Latino parents who've either tried to get their high-achieving students with As into GATE and had not succeeded. So it's a very good thing to see an emerging paradigm shift that points toward greater inclusivity, and it's good to see a positive change underway and mirroring one of Triple E's stated goals. It'd be a good thing to set the conditions so that teachers, parents, students, community members, and leadership be able to work together as one in order to ensure equity and excellence for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guareña. Ms. Marie.
Hi there, good evening. I'm Alina Marie with Just Communities. We're very proud to be a partner with the school district in working in efforts to create equity and success for all students. The first time I participated in our Institute for Equity in Education, I was really struck by an administrator who stated with passion that GATE was truly a GATE. And ever since then, participants in all of our programs have really repeated the sentiment, whether they be educators, students, or parents, that GATE, as it's currently structured, was barring high-achieving students of color from accessing all the opportunities that come with an education that's really rich with rigorous courses. So Just Communities supports the proposed plan for restructuring GATE for that reason, because we believe that creating the conditions for many more students of color to have access to higher-level classes is an essential step in closing the achievement gap, which is one of our shared goals. We acknowledge that some parents of students in GATE may feel that a change would mean that they were losing a program that really served their program, their children well, and we understand why they might be concerned. But as we understand the program, what would change would be the makeup of students in the classes, but what wouldn't change at all is the academic rigor of those classes, as well as having specific services available for GATE students. Furthermore, research shows that all students benefit, both academically and socially, from learning in an environment of diversity that reflects all the different students at their school. As important as changing the GATE program is, how the plan is put into action will ultimately determine its success. Because the proposed change would impact many people, we encourage the board to consider an implementation process that provides meaningful opportunities for parents, students, teachers, and other stakeholders to share their concerns and participate, as well as long-term professional development to make sure teachers are equipped to teach a diverse and culturally relevant and inclusive ways. So in sum, I really commend the board for taking this on. Taking action to transform GATE shows a commitment to moving toward a vision of schools where all students can succeed at the highest possible level. Just Communities is just one of many community organizations here to support the schools in working towards that vision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment.
You know, yes, and I had at the bottom of my, you can see the presentation scheduled, that I had some staff comments, and I had three people. I had no idea we'd have such a crowd tonight. I knew that some people wanted to speak. I'm thinking that I will go ahead and have these three people speak, and they're welcome to stay if they want, but they've been here a long time. Laura Wilson, back in the back from La Colina, she's a GATE avid teacher, and Joanne Caines from La Cumbra, who drove all the way from a conference down south to get here in time, and then Mark Caprito. So maybe in that order, we could have them come up. They were part of the presentation. I don't think they have much more than, you know, two, three minutes, similar to the others, to give their voice, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
Okay, so let me preface this by saying those students are a hard act to follow, so I'll go through my prepared remarks, but I really support all of the opinions shared tonight so far. So hello, good evening. Laura Wilson from La Colina Junior High. For the last five years, I've been teaching GATE physical science for eighth grade and also college prep, and then for the last three years, I've been teaching the Avid elective for seventh grade students. At La Colina, we've been working to develop a strategic, ah, sorry, a strategic system to closely monitor the academic progress of all students, but with special focus on our avid students. And that monitoring includes their grades and their core classes, their CST scores, and teacher feedback and recommendations. In order to be eligible for the most rigorous courses on our campus, which include honors and currently GATE, students in the Avid program must maintain As and Bs, CST scores in the advanced and proficient ranges. And also, we have asked teachers to evaluate their students' performance on a quarterly basis, whether they're exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, or working below those expectations. With those criteria being met, we do whatever is possible to move as many underrepresented students into those rigorous courses as possible. That transition can be challenging for students, but again, the overall impact is powerful and positive in terms of their long-term academic advancement. Avid students receive support in the Avid elective class through a curriculum that's based on writing, inquiry, collaboration, reading, and organization. Some of the WICER support comes in the form of a two-day-a-week tutorial, which is a small-group collaborative learning situation where students are encouraged to develop their ability to ask higher-level questions and also go into greater depth in terms of the understanding of what they're covering in their core classes. One of the other supports the Avid program provides are weekly progress reports, which create open and current communication between students, parents, core teachers, and Avid elective teachers or academic coaches, as we like to be known. Lastly, and possibly most importantly, our avid students get encouragement. This encouragement empowers the students to realize their potential by taking up those opportunities to push themselves into the more rigorous classes as well. In my experience, it's not uncommon for our underrepresented students, or specifically our avid students who have been moved into those more rigorous classes, to perform just as well or even outperform traditionally identified GATE students using the same grading scale criteria, projects, assignments, everything. So they're incredibly successful. They rise to the occasion and to the expectations. I believe that redesignating the most rigorous classes available as honors instead of GATE will help students see, or help students to see that increasing the rigor and level of work and thought that they're working at, those are attainable goals for them, as opposed to something that's dependent to a gift that's bestowed on you at birth. The avid students are talented, diligent, and determined students. They earn and deserve their spots in our honors and GATE classes, and they go on to take advanced placement courses in high school. And recently, I've been hearing about some of our past avid students that are getting accepted and interviewed by some of the most prestigious colleges, prestigious universities in our country. So ultimately, access to advanced courses is the key to the students unlocking their full potential. So thank you for examining this situation.
Thank you.
Joanne Caines, Principal of La Cumbra.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to appear before you, and I think Robin described La Cumbra as the poster child. So before I poster us, I'd just like to thank you for reviewing the data on student achievement. And as we know, and I'm just repeating what the board already knows, La Cumbra is the highest minority secondary school in the district. We are eighty-two percent Latino. We have the lowest level of parent education of any secondary school. We have the highest number of students on free and reduced meals at seventy-five percent poverty. We have the highest percentage of English learners at fifty-nine percent. We have the lowest number of identified GATE students in the secondary district at twenty-nine. However, we are a ten, almost all across for our subgroups. Our whites are ten, our Latinos are ten, and our subgroups are the highest performing subgroups in the secondary district. So we are the poster child because we offer GATE and honors classes, and quite honestly, we don't have thirty-three students to fill any one of those classes. What we've done, and I'd like to just share it with you briefly, is we've looked for potential and opportunity for incoming students. We feed from mostly program improvement elementary schools. However, that doesn't mean that those students cannot achieve at the very highest levels. Now, we have not dumbed down our classes. We have supported students to reach GATE-level instruction and achievement for our students. We've done this through a variety of means, including the very high expectations, the very belief that all children can learn, the very culture of success at a high level expected of all students. Professional development intensive and required. For example, eighty percent of our staff has been to Avid Summer Institute for at least two years, not including the Avid professional development here locally. We use data as our driving force. We take students from where they are, and we continually examine the data to push them forward at an amazing rate. We monitor their progress. We push students up, and we support them in their quest to reach the highest level of achievement. Our classes are very rigorous. As a matter of fact, we offer the strand of core knowledge, and when you look at a core-knowledge GATE program, it is, in fact, the most rigorous program offered within several hundred miles in this area. Do students who are identified GATE think that they're getting any less of a curriculum? Absolutely not. Again, we are a ten for whites, we are a ten for Latinos. Everybody's getting a very high-level curriculum with support. We've worked hard to train teachers. We've worked hard to extend time, extend the day, and support students. So I'm proud to appear before you and very humbly, I suggest to you that what is being proposed to you is what La Cumbra has been doing for several years, and it has paid off at amazing rates. Our students don't know any different. They know that they are high-level students. We don't have to call them GATE or honors. They know what they can do at the junior high level. And our goal, of course, is to open those doors to higher education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's marvelous.
And one more, Mark Caprito. As Mark's coming up, I want to mention that our secondary principals have all been meeting on this for quite a while. Thank you. Norm Clevenger couldn't be here tonight because he's at a parent meeting, but he wanted me to say that, you know, he and Mark and, and, Mark, have all been meeting and pretty much feel the same way that GATE is restrictive and the policies inhibit the inclusion of minority students. GATE and honors classes are virtually the same in content and rigor, and we would be much better off at the high school level if GATE and honors could be one and the same. And I also wanted to thank Laura and Todd as staff members for sharing that. So, Mark, I think that will be the last.
You've pretty much answered everything. Thank you for letting us speak on behalf of this. First of all, when I arrived here three years ago, one of the concerns I had was that Santa Barbara High School, and I always felt that the achievement gap at that school was widening and that we had two schools, and I think I made that pretty clear. And one of the issues I really saw was, really was the GATE program as the most natural barrier, you know, it's actually man-made barrier, but it's a natural barrier because of the time it's been involved with the district that we have. And the concern I have, and we've talked, both, all three of us, Mark and, Mark and I, Mark and Norm and I, rather, had spoken about what kinds of things are taking place in the schools. And for us, this didn't start as a GATE issue. This started as an issue because we didn't have represented, we had few underrepresented students in AP classes. So we were looking at what's preventing these kids from getting there, and I need to look at it from that perspective, and everybody else has had this perspective, but for us, this was really clear. This is something that we were given a charge to look at, and so we were trying to look at what is stopping these kids. And we really feel like this is probably the greatest barrier, because a lot of these kids, even though we know that the kids can get in without the, any prerequisite, you can take an AP class, most of these kids are not prepared. There's not a level of comfort that they're being prepared for. The second thing that happens that we hear about, and I know that I've heard a lot of the students allude to that, is the issue of the underrepresented student being in a classroom with all white kids. It's absolutely amazing, and there's a lot of talk about that, and for us to not take that as a serious issue is a problem, and we really have to take some time to look at that. We spoke with the staff, and I had a staff meeting on Wednesday of last week, and I brought this up because we were dealing with... brought this up because we were dealing with equity and education issues. And I don't have a staff member at Santa Barbara High School who is interested in keeping the GATE program. And I, there's no other way to put it. It's just, I have to be as honest as I can. I came with a charge. I wanted to make sure that I was representing my staff, and I've spoken to Mark and I've spoken to Norm. I haven't found a staff member around. I did find one that was worried about the money, and it wasn't, the only issue was, do we get the money? And we were concerned about what the money was used for. And that's not the direction I'm going to go, but we're not talking about the levels of education. We're talking about somebody's influx of dollars. So it's a different issue. But after looking at the programs, we really felt that the staff also agrees that the greatest barrier for any of our underrepresented students to move ahead is the fact that they can't get through GATE. They weren't identified early enough, so once they hit what we call the honors course, they stop. And some of the kids look at, why would I go to honors? I mean, what is the value? So I think it's something that we really need to address. The greater majority of our students who enter the AP programs are GATE-identified. Our goal, and as a staff, we've, we've got to get rid of the two-school mentality, at least at Santa Barbara High School. I think throughout the district, it really needs to be, it really needs to be addressed. But we need an equitable education for all students. We need to give them an opportunity to achieve at a higher level. And when we stop the kids and we say, well, this is it, then a lot of them pretty much agree that this is it. Currently, the GATE classes are identified as our highest courses, and oftentimes, we're just talking about restructuring. There are very few districts, and I'm sure you all know that, there are very few districts who use GATE. And one of the concerns we have are the number of parents who see this as the, truly the gateway to a four-year college. And I've been in a lot of districts who don't have GATE, and I can tell you, a lot of those kids go to college. I, I just don't know, I, maybe I'm missing some, but a lot of those kids go to four-year colleges. And the last school I was at had no GATE program, and we sent ninety-eight percent of our kids to college, and probably eighty percent of those kids went to a four-year college. The twenty percent who didn't get in went to a two-year college, and I know that Dr. Noel mentioned this. Why? Because they're the first transferable students to a four-year college. They get first priority, so they can go anywhere they want. So these kids are all going to college. So I wasn't, I'm not sure how that equates. Also, when we look at things, and I think there's a element that I need to bring regarding our parents. Our parents are shocked when we tell them that when the kids leave, nobody outside of this district knows anything about GATE. The colleges don't look at GATE as the highest level. If you look at the UC doorways, the highest level they look at, and it's real clear on the website, is honors, and they cite honors. There's not a UC around that cites GATE as being the highest-level course. So our parents are a little bit misunderstanding about this, and we need to be honest with them. We need to be upfront with them. Once they leave this district, GATE goes away. The issue was brought up several times by a student, students, and a couple of other presenters about the weighted grade. Interesting to think that if I'm a high school athlete, and I'm in a regular course, and I get a C and/or a D, and because of that D I become ineligible, and my counterpart in a GATE class gets a D, his grade is weighted, and all of a sudden, he's eligible. How does that work? So if we're using these as eligibility requirements, it's something else that we need to address. In discussion with the other principals, my suggestion, our suggestion, is to eliminate the weighted grade. There's no variance. Once the kids leave our school, they take away the weighted grades anyway. And this is, this is sometimes a surprise to our parents as well. So the bottom line for us is just eliminating GATE. It's not a restructuring. We, we are currently looking at using honors at our top-level of courses. And then I have to allude, one more thing that Todd said, this whole notion of the issue of, of the upper-level classes, there is a strong, healthy presence to get our kids, a lot more of our kids eligible for the two-year college requirement in math and English Language Arts. By limiting what we offer them isn't helping. It's really not helping. Now, the chart I gave you, and I, I could go into a thousand things, that's really small, but what I wanted to show you were the possible honors sections versus the existing GATE sections. And what you'll notice on that is that with the kids right now, that, at least at our school, at Santa Barbara High School, we have seven GATE courses in grade nine. So how's it possible that we have seven honors courses? And if this is all clearly identified by CST scores at three-seventy-five, what it tells you, there's a lot of kids in that GATE program that shouldn't be in there if you base it on three-seventy-five. There's also a lot of kids in those programs that probably should be in there, but because they weren't identified in grade three, they're not allowed to get in. And this is just the beginning. It's ninth grade. So I really urge you to consider this, and you can, you can follow it. I don't need, it's self-explanatory, but it really identifies the number of sections that could be offered in honors-levels courses versus GATE courses. If you do it that way, not only you become more inclusive, but you also give a lot of other kids an opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Okay, I will try to move this quickly, because I, it looks like we have a lot left, but we just have a few more sheets. So, Dave, we have, the draft proposal is next for redesigning the guidelines. And I wanted to say, I just wanted to state again, the goal of course is to increase the number of underrepresented students successfully participating in advanced courses. So here are the guidelines and assumptions, and this isn't the actual plan, but I think this is really important, that GATE students, our current GATE students, will not lose anything academically. Courses will remain at the same level or higher. In fact, I, and I said it a little bit in the agenda item, that when we include diverse, you know, a diverse population of students in a group, the level of the voices that are there, the richness of the dialogue, the level of inquiry, and just the whole dynamics within the group change. Maddie, one of the students, talked about how these students go together, you know, along, they're, they're really missing out. I feel like we're not serving any of our students well with the way that we have this framed right now. They're, they're missing out on a lot of high-level. So they will only get more, not less. Potentially, more students will have access to rigorous advanced courses. Honors courses will be available according to student placement criteria, and I believe this is a question some people have. There will not be a limit on the number of honors-level courses for fully-qualified students. So we're not saying that because there are four GATE classes right now at a school, there's going to be four honors classes, or something like that. We're looking at who's qualified, and then we create the classes. That's the way a system works. Similar to our standards-based system versus the bell curve, I mean, of course, there's always that natural bell curve in students' abilities and all, but in order, there's not that limit. We're imposing that kind of thing by limiting the number. There's nothing wrong with having a whole lot of kids in honors classes. So we're not going to limit that and say there can only be a certain amount. The honors courses, and Mark alluded to this, although I guess he's gone, he's had a long day too, the, the honors courses will follow the University of California guidelines for honors-level courses, earning that extra credit in grade-point average or weighted grades. And the guidelines include A, B, IB, college courses, honors in eleventh and twelfth grade. And I brought the UC, the doorways that he talked about. It really clearly shows how, of course, GATE courses right now are never, the, the weighting goes away instantly. They're not even, you know, recognized by universities. And the weighted grades in honors are clearly in eleventh and twelfth grade, and there's a very narrow definition of why that is, and, you know, explains it well. So if anyone's interested in that, I do have that. But we would want to follow those guidelines for the honors courses. And then, of course, it follows then, what are the placements? We would be looking at the honors program, and we're looking at somewhere three-seventy-five, potentially as a CST score. We have the college prep that is really those proficient grade-level students. And I think, very importantly, we have our intervention replacement program. We have Read 180. We have double-block math and extended-year math, where you can have, you know, three semesters or, or four semesters to complete, for those students who really need extra support. We haven't had that in place to the degree we'd have now. When this question has come up before, I know that there's been issues, well, if we take all these, you know, kids out of the, the college prep classes, then those are going to be really dumbed down. Or if we limit the number of kids in honors, if we really do a cutoff, and some of those kids who are in honors right now go back to college prep, college prep is looked at as a very low-level kind of course, and that, that is a strong perception out there. That shouldn't be the case. That's proficient, grade-level work, and we now have appropriate courses for, for students who need extra support, and, you know, hoping to get them up to that. So I think a lot has changed in the landscape here since we've had this discussion, you know, in prior years. So that is kind of the assumptions and guidelines. The next page is the draft. Again, all of this is draft. I tried to make it as big and bold as possible, the draft. Secondary honors program design would be to remove the GATE label, that artificial label, from courses and replace with honors. The honors program course offerings then would include the honors, advanced placement, international baccalaureate in one of our schools in dual enrollment. The honors enrollment criteria, and we talked a lot about this, and again, this is draft, and it's a proposal, that at least two of the following. We wanted to include that GATE identification because that's important for a lot of people. Maybe that'll be transitioned, maybe that'll always stay. In fact, when we look at the data, our GATE students are doing very well, most of them. You know, there are some that maybe need to think about maybe that class because they were identified in third grade. Maybe they're not doing well in a math or an English class now in high school, but at this point, we would leave that in. And then the three-point-oh grade in previous coursework, math or English Language Arts, the CST score of three-seventy-five or above, and we look at two to three years of CST scores. Joanne tells me that she looks at a variety of years on that to really see that, that, that's, you know, you're giving student, students every opportunity. And then, of course, teacher recommendation, particularly when the above criteria is not met. There are many students who, for one reason or another, may not meet these and should be in those rigorous courses. I think the next one's very important. Providing academic and/or social-emotional support for students, GATE or non-GATE, that are not making the adequate progress. Particularly with our GATE students, the social-emotional piece is, is big. So we, we need to have that in place. We need to have also, and this is something around that notion that GATE students won't miss anything, in fact, they'll be gaining something. We believe that we really need to be providing enrichment opportunities within the day and outside of the school day for our GATE-identified students. Students that need to work together, to do activities together, do things that aren't necessarily bound to the classroom. Those are the kinds of things that we really need to provide for our GATE students, our identified GATE students. Provide ongoing comprehensive professional development for honors program teachers and secondary counselors, and include that GATE certification process that Sandy talked about. Provide a parent education program for advanced learners, that's for all parents that, you know, want to be participating with the advanced learners, and design and implement a monitoring and evaluation, evaluating system. I know Dr. Noel is always big on this. He reminds us all the time, when you do something new, you are even old, you've got to continually monitor it, see if it works, make sure that you're looking at the data and it's going in the direction you want it to go. That piece, design it. We don't have it yet, other than just the data, kinds of things I've showed you tonight, but we, we need to be, that needs to be a big part of it. And then additionally, we would look at the elementary grades and the outreach and the comprehensive professional development. A lot of our teachers in elementary and secondary have already started that. I feel like I'm talking fast here to get through all of this. Along with the program design, then, the next page is the, and the last page is, would be the professional development plan. That's a huge part of it. And I, I know that we could use some of the exemplary program information that Sandy's got to help us with this. But just off the top, differentiation strategies, including icons. I don't know if you're familiar with that. That's a, a big part of much of the GATE training. Teresa Kuntz, our elementary program coordinator, teaches with that. She's been doing it for years. She's been instructing our teachers in how to use icons. It really deepens the level of, of questioning and, and work students do. Pre-advanced placement is another offering that is available. Classroom management for advanced learners. Brain growth and development. We had eight teachers in January go and hear Barbara Clark, and they loved that. They were very excited about what they heard her talk about, and then they got together afterward and talked about it. California Association for the Gifted. By the way, all of these are planned. Sandy has presenters for some of them. She has teachers that are, that are going to some of them. The theme at the March conference for the CAG conference is differentiation in diverse classrooms. So all over, you know, the same topic is coming up, and then we could incorporate that into the June Professional Development Week. The certification process, we do have several teachers that started this about, I want to say it was maybe four years ago, and we were paying for them to go supporting that, and we stopped doing that. We had a lot of other things going with using our professional development money. We want to continue that. We'd like to pick up where we stopped for some of those teachers, and of course, encourage a lot more to begin the process to get their certification. And you see the funding down there. Oh, it shouldn't say Title III. It's Title II. That's a big typo. I didn't catch that. Definitely not Title, well, I mean, I'm not saying definitely not. I would use Title II. Title III is particularly for our English learners, and that's not where I would target that. It's Title II for highly-qualified teachers. Sorry about that. And I'm going to just, Sandy's going to take about, not even a minute, I think, to talk about a very exciting conference. Preparate. Yeah, you have to talk at the microphone, and I know that, I, I think just communities might be going, or they have the information. It's this March in San Diego, but we have a lot, we have teachers going.
Well, as Robin pointed out, the theme at the March California Association for the Gifted Conference this year is differentiated instruction in diverse classrooms. So every professional organization that I know of, either statewide or nationally, is trying to address our changing population and the needs of a more diverse culture. The, apparently, I just found out about this year, this is the Fourth Annual Preparate Conference in San Diego, March first and second, and there's about fifty workshops and seminars to attend. Everything from changing the image of the underrepresented student as a serious academic person, outreach to families, working with gangs, working with border issues, since it's in San Diego. This conference in the past has been in Florida, Illinois, and Texas, so we're lucky to have it in California. We're sending five teachers, three counselors, and Dr. White and I will be going as well. So we're very excited about that conference. There's also a session on identifying Latino gifted students, so I'm very interested in that. I'm trying to think of some of the other conference, or workshop titles, but it's going to be very, very good, and we're looking forward to it.
Hey, thank you. That's just an example of, of many that are, we're really targeting that. So to end this, and I know you've heard a lot, looked at a lot, my proposal also includes, and it's not written here, but I believe we need to have a task force work group. I know Sandy wants to be on it. The principals want to work, some teachers. We could certainly have SBTA a part of that. We have kind of a short timeline in that our master schedule work starts, you know, really intensely by March. And so we would like to really study this in February to kind of look at the, the proposal, the way it's planned, look at some of the data, you know, maybe tweaks at the cut points, I mean, different things about it. We also would like, as Elena pointed out, be able to talk with parents, with teachers have, and we haven't decided whether we need to do that at every school, to do that in, you know, groups, junior-high high school, or a couple schools, but, but we want to have that opportunity so that it's not just, I mean, our next few board meetings with you guys are going to be a lot about budget and all. And so we would like to bring this back. I, I would like to have the board's kind of approval on it, so bring it back as a plan to, if you will, kind of a district-wide pilot, but to redesign our, our secondary GATE honors program as an honors program to serve our GATE and advanced learners. So I'd like your comments on that timeline, and I don't know if Dr. Sarbas wants to.
Let me comment on the timeline as well. I'll remind you that we'll soon be balloting for our students as to what courses they're taking, so we do need to move fairly quickly on this. So that we do have those courses well-described. We, we'll need to give parents the assurance that these will be rigorous courses, and we'll need to do some things to put that in place, so.
Okay. Discussion by the board. Mrs. Parker.
Well, it's hard to know where to begin. This is such a huge issue, and I'm so pleased that we are really tackling this. I know that you've been, staff have been thinking about this for, for years. The board's been thinking about it for years, but just really intensive the past few months, geared towards making a change. I want to be clear, because the way some speakers brought it up, they were talking about the elimination of GATE. It's not the elimination of GATE, that it's, it's really about opening access at the secondary level to the highest-level courses. And I think that one of the things that we don't talk about, and what we weren't talking about now, is that this, the Santa Barbara Elementary District about now is that this, the Santa Barbara Elementary District only identifies, less than 10% of their students is gate. And our feeder elementaries, the other, the four feeder elementaries to the secondary district identify at a rate of 30 to 40% gate. So if you just live within the boundaries of the city of Santa Barbara in our school district, you're actually at a disadvantage, no matter what your color, of getting into the highest level classes in the secondary school, which is, it's not fair. And we get this also with the students, every now and then it comes to the board level where we have parents saying, wait a second, my student wasn't identified gate but has a higher, higher test scores and higher GPA and yet they can't get in the highest level class because they don't have this label. Even though those students, some students that are in there are performing at lower levels. When it comes to the board, it's middle class, upper class, advantaged students, typically Anglo students whose parents know how to advocate for them. And we'll take it to that level and we'll meet as many times as it takes to make sure that there's a space for their kid at the highest level class. And it's not fair. There's so many kids out there that are in exactly the same position but don't have the parent advocate rooting for them. And it seems like so much of what we do is geared around the convenience of the master schedule and creating a gate class and saying, well, some kids are going to be lucky enough to fill those seats even though they're non-gate, but equally qualified kids can't be in the highest level class. And I really, I really hope that we can actually take action and move forward with it this time. I appreciate all the things that you've brought up because it, I think it makes it really clear that both for gate and advanced learners, however you want to look at it, it's not just about that one class, the highest level class. It's about counselors, it's about parent education, it's about professional development for teachers. And the existing gate plan that Ms. Robertson referred to, that's almost a, just a little blip in there that says that there's gate courses in the secondary level. There's so many other things that are out there that can be for gate and for advanced learners. I would like it, when we come back to it, to look at the board policy on gate education. We, in the board policy, doesn't say anything about secondary level having to have gate classes, but it, I think it might be nice to tie that into the board policy in saying, we offer the highest level classes, which can include, and I think it already says things like IB and AP, and if it can just be clear that the highest level class in the secondary district is honors, I would be very interested in moving that way.
Dr. Noel?
I am torn by this conversation. Because I certainly concur with all of the aspirations. The part, the part that troubles me most, I mean, I see that this is a very fundamental change that we're talking about doing. The room tonight was full of advocates of doing it. The room will be full of people who are unhappy about it as soon as it becomes known. And they will probably be much more forceful than the people who are for it. So I think that we don't have the full picture. Nothing arouses families more than this issue. And, and rightly so, in, in the sense that every family is trying to get the best possible education for their child. That's their responsibility. And this, if this is perceived, as I believe it will be perceived, as the abandonment of the gate program, I expect there will be a very strong reaction. I want to reassert, I believe in the aspirations and goals. It all hinges on whether differentiation at the high school level works. And I've seen not one shred of empirical evidence presented here that it works. I, I took this up, the last time this came up was some years ago and I, and I, and there was talk about differentiation, this was at the junior high school level. There were, who was it, came in, Turnbull was part of a group of junior high people who were going to abolish something, I forget what it was, but anyway, there was a, a big flap. And I talked with some people out in the profession and they said, you know, it, we have pretty good evidence that differentiation can work at the elementary school level. We have a single teacher all day long and that kind of close relationship where you can really get to know your kids. But differentiation at the high school level where you have kids moving in and out is another issue. Now, I, I read the, the, I don't do it as my nighttime reading, but I read the, the California frameworks. And they call for differentiation. They call for, they call it universal access. And they identify five different kinds of learners. Advanced learners, struggling readers, struggling writers, students with disabilities, English learners, have I get to five yet? And, and, and this is focusing only on one. That, that is differentiation. And I, and as I've said before in this forum, I think that differentiation has to be the wave of the future if we're going to be, if we're going to reflect that set of values and reflect now what is now state policy. But bottom line for me is, we're plunging into this major policy change and we haven't even done a pilot study. We haven't tried it. It's sort of like bottom up. This is all theoretical. Why don't we, why isn't this proposal, one that says, we're going to establish a, some classes that really take differentiation seriously? We're going to design a study and see whether differentiation, it works, different kind of class, subject matter, different levels, and so on. We're going to pour some money into that because it's going to take training and experience. And, and show, when you show, if, if you can show people that it works, not just your assurance, which I know is sincere, oh, we're not going to dumb down the classes, you're going to have to convince people that. But yeah, and how do you convince, you have to show them that it's going to work. Then I think, in some sense, then a policy change kind of is consistent with the experience, it's, and I think it has a chance. The very, the very thing that drives what I was complaining about earlier, about the, the, the academy is being segregated and elitist. That very thing is what drives, what drives this. I mean, it's, it's all people trying to get their kids in the best possible program as they perceive it. So are there, to me, the only solution is, show them another way. Show them that it works.
Mrs. Cudero. I'm, I'm going to jump, just for the fun of it.
Okay. Well, I like, Dr. Noel was on the board the last time this proposal, or a very similar kind of proposal came forward. And Dr. Noel raised many of the same concerns at that time that he raises tonight. And one of the things, I, I remember at the time being quite excited, I, I said it was the most inspiring thing I had heard in 30 years of following the school district. And I was horrified that, I think for lack of sort of political courage, the board bowed to the pressure from a very particular group of the community. Unfortunately, that, the meetings to which Dr. Noel referred were some of the most disheartening meetings I've sat through. And I am, actually was at least, really encouraged by what I perceive as the courage of this board in the willingness to, as Ms. Parker said, to tackle that issue head-on. I really think it is after 30 years or more, I, I can only speak to the 30 years I've been following it, it is time for us to put the majority of our students' needs over a small minority of the students' needs. When we're talking about 82% of students at a particular school being students of color, Latino students particularly, we can't call them minority students. Our students, our Latino students in our district are not minorities. In many of our school, they are practically the entire population. We owe it to them and we owe it to their families and we owe it to our community and even to ourselves to address something that has been ignored for way too long simply because we don't have the courage to make a small group of families upset. That is, as far as I'm concerned, completely unacceptable. We have done it to too many generations of students already. I sat through those classes, being the only one. My children sat through those classes, being the only one. My children refused to participate in, in gate any longer because they didn't want to be the only one. We cannot keep doing that to students. There are not a finite number of students in our district who are gifted and talented. Every student in our district is gifted and talented and they deserve to not be labeled as not.
Mrs. Deacon?
About 10 years ago, one of the first roles I had as a volunteer in the school district was serving on the district gate advisory council and I was on, Mariana Gray was the, the liaison at that point, but I was on a subcommittee, a small subcommittee, trying to increase diversity in the gate classes. And we came to the same conclusion that I've heard over and over again tonight, that you need critical mass, that students are not comfortable when they're the only ones in the class. And our group as parents weren't really equipped to deal with this, but I actually am thrilled to be on a board that's contemplating this change because I think the time has definitely come. I think our pilot program has been La Cumbre and I think we know that it works. And so I, I don't think we need to do any more research. I think it's, it's time to move on this. For me, I think the most critical piece is going to be the teacher piece. Because if we look at these very small differences between math and EL scores and, and grades, between gate and non-gate students, I have to believe it's what's happening in the classroom that's accounting for a very large part of that. And I suspect we will be adding a number of more students as we move to this gate, this honors model. And so we absolutely need to be sure that we have teachers that are equipped to provide the rigor that people have come to associate with gate classes. Because we don't, we don't want to dumb down our classes, we want to lift everybody up and, and that rigor is the key to that. And so I think it's really, really important to make sure that, that the teachers are qualified and equipped to deal with those, those students.
Thank you. I guess being new to this, I'm a believer that you just don't bull your way through. I'd like to know what kind of outreach has been, this was obviously a group tonight that somehow heard about this and got here. But what has, what outreach has taken place to parents, to students, to teachers on this program, to the general group of parents in our, in our secondary schools?
That's, that's what I spoke to at the end. That's what we have to do, is we wanted to present it to you first. I don't know that some of the schools haven't had that kind of discussion they possibly had. In fact, this comes up all the time. I just can't even tell you how many venues and how many meetings all over the place, not just at schools, the community, I mean, it's, there's lots and lots of discussion behind this. So it's not, it's not like a surprise to anyone, I'm sure. However, the opportunity to have focused target groups, you know, focus group discussions has not been in place. We wanted to do that after we presented it to the board, to let you know what we're doing and then hold those meetings so that parents can come.
I think the opportunity to discuss this with parents, discuss this with the various groups, have open meetings on it, hear diverse attitudes and responses, to make sure that we at least give everyone the opportunity to share their views. You know, to have the attitude of, we're going to go forward, period, let's just do it, is counterproductive in my mind. But I, I agree with everybody. It, it sounds like a thing we should be doing. I just want to encourage us to do it in a, in a manner that everybody feels they're heard and, and the views are heard and that we can then move forward. But they have to have the feeling that we are willing to at least discuss it, look at it, tweak it, whatever, but we can move forward. But I'd like to see us move forward as, as a group, so. Dr. Noel?
I've had some afterthoughts that are, because I started out taking notes about, what do you do to make this work and work really strongly? Okay? Because I, as I say, I agree with the, with the aspirations. As I say, differentiation is utterly crucial. But it's one thing to send someone off to a conference on differentiation, it's another thing to have differentiation, differentiation implemented, to have evidence that it is working, to have feedback to the teachers, guidance, because I'm almost sure that it's going to be very hard for a lot of, especially more senior high school instructors to, to make the shift into a genuinely differentiated classroom, well, especially one that deals with the five levels of, five different kinds of students, okay?
Actually, those five levels would never be in, in honors class.
But we just saw the variance on the, on the data. They're there. They're there.
But those-
You don't have, you don't have intervention students, but you've still got variance. Variance is the issue.
Certainly. There, there's variance within there.
Variance is the issue.
But we wouldn't-
Look, I taught at Penn State, I taught at Stanford, I taught at University of California and Santa Barbara. There was variance, although we had the top 12%, there was huge variance in the classes. It's, it's inevitable.
That's true.
The other, the other, the other thing, support. And I'm, I'm really going down sort of, as I think about it, I'm going down a list of the things that Joanne Keynes has done at, at La Cumbre. Differentiation, support, lots and lots of support for kids who are at the lower end of the variance, okay? Expectations and culture. I've, I've argued this before, that how do you step into a, a high school that's been going for decades, that's got 2,000 students, and implant a new culture that, that says everybody can learn, you know, we can, we say that all the time, but a culture that, where that means something and particularly where, where there are high expectations. We know now from the small, the many small charter schools that are doing a really great job with poor and disadvantaged and, and minority populations in, in some of our urban areas, we know that expectations are absolutely crucial. And they say, that, that's where it starts. Everyone here is going to do well and that's known, okay? How do you do that in, in, when you have to do, try to implant that into an existing culture where, where as Mr. Cuido said, which is two schools? It may be doable, but that's, that is a piece of this. And finally, the one that really hits home, okay? I say, we had variance at the university, but we had a different instructional model. We delivered the material, if the kids didn't get it, that's their problem, okay? Now, we, few of us were that crass about it, okay? But that's fundamentally a different posture than saying, you, whether you're a senior professor in, in physics or whether you're a high school teacher, you are responsible for whether they get it or not. It's an outcome-based system of instruction. And, and, and I've been told this for a long, long time now, that, that sort of like until we get our high schools profession to move to an outcome-based model, we've got problems. And I, and I say that, so part of a program of this kind, it seems to me, has to address all of those components simultaneously.
Mrs. Cudero?
I believe that we, we do need to have, you know, data, that we do need to have evidence. I agree that I think La Cumbre has served as our pilot. We see that it does work. We saw from the, Dr. Noel, you mentioned the variance. We saw from the fact that there was such great variance within the levels, that the teachers are already dealing with that amount of variance. Because the honors students had a huge amount of variance and the gate students had a huge amount of variance. So those teachers already deal with the range of variance that they will have if this gets put into place. But I also think that we make changes for two reasons. We make changes because we have evidence that the, what we are going to change to is likely to work. We also make changes because we know that we're, what we're changing from isn't working. And I think 30 years of evidence is really enough.
Do you have a direction to go forward?
I certainly do and I thank you all for your comments.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Hay, Hayden is not here. Pardon?
Oh, no, no, and we're not going to end. We could take a break. Let me just explain that, that this last week, we believed that Dr. Hayden would be here. It is not his fault that he is not. He apparently told us that he was not going to be, but I will deliver his items and I can do so rather quickly.
That's what I was just going to say. Dr. Hayden's not here, but Dr. Sarver says he'll do it quickly. do it quickly, we have two more items, we'll take a five-minute break-
Would you like to take a break?
We'll take a five-minute break, and-
Good, thank you.
Go. I'll call it back to order. Dr. Sarver, I've been asked to ask you, how time-sensitive are these next two reports?
Well, they're not very, however, we've moved them from meeting to meeting to meeting, and our next meetings are just packed, so I'm-
The question is that-
We don't have to deliver them tonight.
The members may want, may want to ask more questions than maybe the time we have left, and-
It's, it's entirely up to the board, we could have a special meeting.
I would like to make a motion that we postpone these, because I personally would like to talk more about them than I think we probably have the will to do tonight.
Did you just hear what Dr. Sarver said? We can have a special meeting.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily have to have a special meeting, I'm sure there are some meetings maybe in-
Well, we can try to put them on the-
March or April.
-next meeting's agenda.
Maybe one at the next meeting, and one the following meeting? Do they both go together?
No, they don't have to both go together, but I'd be happy to move them both, in time permitting, maybe we could do them both next Tuesday, how would that be?
Okay, we'll do that.
I think if we adhere to the times on our agenda, we can probably get through it. Good point.
Shoot, I wanted to go back to being a research analyst and present SAT and advanced placement exam, but-
Okay, then I think we're at J, adjournment at 8:50, but we're really at 10, 10:10.